Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the school committee. We have an approximately three-hour, 20-minute agenda, so we might as well go ahead and get started. And let's begin with administrative business, the consent agenda.
David?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm watching from my computer, and we're not seeing you. We're seeing the podium. And I'm not sure why. Just, I mean, you know, we can go ahead, but I think people at home would want to see who's talking there.
For those who may not--
Anne, can you fix--
Eric from Dave is working on it.
Is she seeing you now?
No.
We're still just seeing the podium.
For those who may not be aware, we're trying to have a hybrid meeting for the first time out of the school committee room, so working out some of the hijinks.
Yeah, now, now we see you and we see Linus.
Okay. All right. So we are going to begin with administrative business, the consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Shall we do that? Just to talk a little bit about the overnight trips, because I don't think we've had an overnight-- is this the first overnight trip since the pandemic?
A second.
Do we have another one?
Since the pandemic, it is the first trip, although we did at a prior meeting approve-- it was also Lawrence having a field trip to Athol, and now it's the second group that's going there. So that's why we're going through this again.
Okay. Okay. That was just my only question.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Thank you, Nancy. Is there a second? Thank you, Jennifer. Nancy, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right. Next up, we have the student report. Welcome, Ms. Laura Cleaves. This is the first time you're going to be presenting to us on your own, and we're very much looking forward to having you this year. And you now have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Hello to all, and I hope you've all been having a phenomenal Thursday so far. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Laura Cleaves. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a junior at Brookline High School. I'm the 2022 to 2023 School Committee Student Representative, and I am incredibly excited and honored to keep all of you up to date with whatever's going on down at 115 Green. As many of you may know, high school students came back to school on September 6th, and so far, this past week has been a whirlwind. We've just recently welcomed the class of 2026 to the freshly renovated 22-tapped building, or as many of us down at the high school like to call it, the freshman building. Their convocation marked what was, for many, a return to our new normal. There was definitely a resounding gravity and solemnity to be felt in the stemling as 200-plus staff members clapped the newest members of our BHS family into the Robert Studs Auditorium, an age-old tradition. And although that Tuesday was a pretty rainy day, as the freshmen got acclimated to their new home away from home, the week got progressively sunnier, an indication that although the first new days in a new school surrounded by seemingly strange, scary, and intimidating people are rough, things do get easier with time. In other news, the former Science Wing at the high school has been renovated and is now about 99% available for use. Construction took over much of the right side of 115 Green ever since the spring of the 2021 to 2022 school year, and at long last, we finally got to experience newly renovated buildings and classrooms and office suites for students and staff to enjoy respectfully. The communal spaces are also incredible. Being able to look out a window for what seems like the first time in a long time is an unrilled experience. And if anyone at home is interested in seeing parts of the building for themselves, there will be some photos going up in a couple of days on our school website, so it's truly a sight to behold, I'll tell you that, especially considering the wonderful view we've got of our Cypress Field from the third floor. And when I say website, I mean, a Sagamore article will be coming out soon. They've published photos of that side of the school in the coming-- in the coming days. And speaking of which, there's also a new thing at our school, which is the Cypress Field. I'd be remiss to glaze over the fact that students and staff at BHS finally have access to what is probably the most, or at least one of the most burning fields in Brooklyn. As some may recall, renovation of the field began in the spring of the 2020 to 2021 school year. And while valid apprehensions were raised about how this move would impact student life at BHS, I think it's important to acknowledge that we now have a field for the first time in a long time, and that we should appreciate it for what it offers our school committee. And in its short time since its unveiling, it's certainly been used for many school-wide events, such as yesterday's club fair. Usually, the club fair is held in the quadrangle, which is, as some of you may guess, also under renovation. Because of this, we broke into Cypress Field and allocated space for over 120 clubs at BHS to recruit new members in pure, somewhat chaotic yet ultimately wholesome high school fashion. Walking around the field with tables positioned in one big U shape, seeing friends, acquaintances, and classmates you haven't seen in a long time, eating the sundry candy offered at various stands, learning about new clubs that are doing cool and amazing and valuable things, potentially joining a few of them, and then standing in the middle of it all as throngs of people surround you, united by the same goal, seeking a sense of friendship and community. It's a pretty magical thing. It's an event that really epitomizes one of the core values of BHS. We're all in this together, after all, students and staff alike. Which really brings me to the final part of my remarks. It's fair to say that we've gone through quite a lot these past few years, whether it be COVID, remote learning, hybrid learning, the transition-backed school, you name it. The path towards our new normal has been throwing various obstacles in our path, really trying to test our resilience, our drive, our ability to adapt to new, unexpected things. And as we ease into quote-unquote "regularity," it's still important to maintain a sense of compassion in everything we do, and try our best to extend it to whoever we can. It may sound like a digression, but my math teacher last year had a sign on his front door that said, "No one's day is what you think it is. Be extra loving if you can." I can't tell you how many times I've looked at that little sign and felt it resonate deeply within me. What I mean to say here is that we're all fighting our own battles, and we all need, deserve even, patience and grace. Even at the start of a new school year, something simultaneously stressful yet somehow bringing to the top with untapped potential, we still have to make light of the fact that things are going to be tough, but we're going to get through it. Let's try and be a little kinder, a little more understanding, a little more appreciative of the challenges we face. It's hard sometimes, but something tells me that if we put our minds to it, it's going to be worth it. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you, Laura, for that very uplifting message and for giving us a snapshot into the spirit at the high school that you're experiencing. It was very nicely done, and we look forward to some of your future reports. Before we move on, though, I want to give other school committee members a chance to ask any questions that they might have.
Just a quick factual question. You said that the Science Wing is 99% available for use, so it is still not quite ready?
Well, it turns out that I actually have an English class that's supposed to be on the third floor, but we haven't quite moved in. So that's why I'm saying 99%.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you again very much. And you're certainly welcome to stay as long as you'd like, but if you have some homework that you need to attend to, we'll also understand. So next up on our agendas, the superintendent's report. Dr. Gillery?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here tonight and joining us. Thank you also, Laura, for such a bright opening to our school committee meeting. Tonight, we want to share some highlights with you. We're going to introduce some new staff. We are going to share a few updates on school openings, as well as share out a report on summer learning and a few other updates here. So, again, introduction of new educational leaders. We have six of our folks in the room with us, and four are on Zoom. We're going to have highlights from the first week of school. Just a couple of slides there. Leslie is going to share-- our deputy superintendent of teaching and learning is going to share some summer program updates, as well as updated curriculum overviews. We'll share information about our next COVID-19 update, acknowledge National Hispanic Heritage Month, say a little bit about negotiations for a successor paraprofessional contract, and then a brief update on our strategic planning process. So with that, we want to introduce our new slate of educational leaders. So here is the-- again, we shared this information, I think, last week, but tonight I'm going to share a little bit more information and then have each of our members come up to the podium and offer some brief remarks. So with that, the district is fortunate to have a talented, dedicated, and enthusiastic group of 10 new educational leaders joining us. Many of these leaders have risen from within our own ranks, taking on additional responsibilities over the course of the last several years. It's my pleasure to introduce them now to you, and I will start the introduction, as I say, with those that are here in person, and then we will share-- introduce those that have joined us by Zoom. After my brief introduction, or after each person's introduction, we'll have them come up to the podium and say a few words. All right? So that's the plan for tonight. First up, we have Mr. Malcolm Cawthon. He is our new director of Medco. Malcolm Cawthon has been named director of the Brookline Medco Program. Prior to this, Mr. Cawthon held the position of Medco Coordinator at BHS. In that role, he was responsible for the academic and social-emotional support of Medco students at BHS, acting as the liaison for BHS Medco families and coordinating post-secondary planning with BHS Medco students and families. Mr. Cawthon has devoted 24 years to the public schools of Brookline as a social studies teacher, including US, world racial awareness seminar in African-American history, and he also serves as a seed seeking educator equity and diversity facilitator. Mr. Cawthon was honored with the Brookline CPAC Hero Award in 2022. He was named a Margaret Metzger Fellow in 2016 and Teacher of the Year at BHS in 2017. He has many civic affiliations, including Hidden Brookline, Commissioner of the Brookline Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. Mr. Cawthon has earned his BA in Grambling, State University, and that's something he and I rib one another about, and his teacher certification at Drake University. So without further ado, Mr. Cawthon.
Thank you, Dr. Gillery, and thank you, school committee. It's an honor to be here. And I just would like to say, you know, it's an honor to do this work, to use change, but, you know, particularly tonight and hearing Laura Cleves speak and getting to work with really what's about families, and her family, as well as her older sister and her parents, is really what this work is about. And, you know, we don't just put students on buses and bring them here. We bring families to our community. And this is something that is deeply important to me, and I'm really just honored to do it. I was saying, one of my very best friends in the world was a Medco kid I met in first grade. That was, you know, at a school now, Floridah Ruffin Ridley. So-- and so this is something I take really dear to my heart. I am grateful to all of you and all of your work, and hopefully, we can work together and continue to-- for Brookline, which has the second-most Medco kids, as well as is one of the oldest districts to have this program. It is the oldest program that we have in Brookline. And so I look to honor that and work with you to continue to honor it.
Next up, we have Ms. Allison Henry, vice principal at Baker School. After serving for the past five years as the Baker Educational Team facilitator, Allison Henry has been selected as the vice principal at Baker School. Ms. Henry's passion for special education and her leadership skills are evident from all of her school-based experience and connections with families. In her role as the Baker ETF, she has always put students' needs first, ensuring that required services were properly implemented and delivered. Prior to her work in Brookline, Ms. Henry worked at the Walker School for seven years in a range of roles, including head teacher and educational coordinator. Ms. Henry earned her Master's of Education in Teaching of Students with Moderate Disabilities at Leslie University and a Master of Education in Educational Leadership and Management through Fitchburg State University's Educational Leadership Institute. And we welcome Ms. Henry.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gillery, and thank you to the school committee for having me here tonight to welcome me. I'm excited to be continuing my career here in Brookline Public Schools, particularly at the Baker School, where we've been doing a lot of work together so far in my previous role as educational team facilitator for many new, exciting initiatives that are very student-centered and innovative. So I feel very grateful to be able to continue that work in this new capacity with the school leadership team at Baker, staff members, and also, of course, families in the greater community. So I'm very excited for the year ahead, and thank you again for having me.
Next up, we have Ms. Haye Young Coe. She is our Assistant Director for Educational Equity. We're excited to welcome Haye Young as our new Assistant Director of Educational Equity. In this role, Ms. Coe will support our work to promote equitable access, process treatment, and outcomes for all students with a trained focus on our AAPI community. She brings a wealth of knowledge to her role, including lived experiences as a 1.5-generation Korean-American immigrant in America. Before coming to PSB, Ms. Coe worked as a fourth-grade inclusion teacher at the Haley Pilot School in Boston. Her experience included addressing unconscious bias and systemic racism in her role as an educator consultant for the Museum of Fine Arts. Ms. Coe earned her Master's in Education from Portland State University and her Bachelor's of Arts from Scripps College. Let's welcome Ms. Coe.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Gillery, and thank you to the school committee for the warm welcome. I am extremely grateful to be here and to work alongside with Janay, and I really look forward to the collaborative effort that we can bring to bring an equitable and safe and humanizing space for all students at the school district. Thank you so much.
We are reintroducing to the community at large Ms. Elizabeth O'Connell, our interim director, deputy superintendent for Student Services. Lisa joins the public schools of Brookline as interim deputy of Student Services. Ms. O'Connell previously served as the Dedham Public Schools Director of Special Education for seven years. Prior to her work in Dedham, she served in the Axton-Boxborough Regional School District for over 30 years as a special educator, team chairperson, and director of pupil services. Ms. O'Connell's reflective and transparent leadership style is evident in her facilitating targeted PD for staff, leading multiple strategy groups. Ms. O'Connell is an experienced collaborator and facilitator, and she has hit the ground running in the public schools of Brookline. So welcome, Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gillery, and good evening. I want to thank you for the privilege of being here. I am so excited for the school year, and I so appreciate the vote of confidence. And I have hit the ground running. It's a bit like drinking from a fire hose, but we have an absolutely stupendous team, wonderful principals, teachers, administrators, parents and guardians. And I know we'll be pooling our talents to move the district forward. In the first 30 days, I've really focused on an entry plan that's involved having those personal conversations, many meetings with staff visiting programs and schools, conversations with parents and guardians, not enough, looking forward to many more, reading relevant documents. And over the next few months, the Office of Student Services will be delving deeper into some topics and study groups for identified areas, and I will look forward to coming back in the next 30 to 60 days and sharing some of those study groups and our work together. But for this evening, I'm just thrilled to be here, and I've had a wonderful, warm welcome, and I so appreciate the opportunity.
Next up is Dr. Ida Ramos. Dr. Ida Ramos joins the PSB as the new director of Special Education at Brookline High School. Dr. Ramos comes to Brookline with almost three decades of experience in special education. Most recently, she served as the director of Student Services in Lincoln Sudbury-- at Lincoln Sudbury High School, where she worked for nine years. Dr. Ramos has also worked extensively in Cambridge and Boston Public Schools as an assistant program director for teaching and learning, an education team facilitator, and a classroom teacher. We are excited to have Dr. Ramos's unwavering commitment to educational equity for students with disabilities, as shown by her efforts to create and implement an in-district therapeutic day program at Lincoln Sudbury. Dr. Ramos earned her Doctorate of Education Administration from Boston College and a Master of Education from the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Welcome, Dr. Ramos.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Gillery. Good evening, school committee members. For me, it's a pleasure to be in Brookline. As an aside, I live in West Roxbury, so the commute to Sudbury was a long commute, so I'm even more blessed with the shorter commute. I have nothing but good things to say about BHS. They have been extremely welcoming to me. And probably like Laura have said, Anthony Mayer is very committed with the whole administrative team to reset the bones of the high school after the construction and COVID and everything that everyone has gone through. So I feel very lucky to be in this community. I feel very blessed that Lisa is with us also as our-- as our holding our hand. But it has been an extremely welcoming experience for me to be here at BHS and at Brookline-- school district-- school districts of Brookline, to be correct. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Kyle Williams. Mr. Williams has returned to the public schools of Brookline as our new athletic director at BHS. He most recently served as the assistant athletic director at Wellesley Public Schools. He was there for two years. Prior to that, he was the BHS assistant director for five years. He was also a physical education, health, and wellness teacher at Baker School from 2011 to 2014. In addition to his teaching and leadership experience, Mr. Williams has been an assistant baseball and soccer coach at BHS and has been active with the Positive Coaching Alliance, an organization dedicated to cultivating a positive youth sports culture. Mr. Williams earned his BA at Boston University and a Master of Education in Athletic Administration at Indicott College. He is an NI AAA-certified master athletic administrator. Please welcome back Mr. Kyle Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Gillery, and thank you to the school committee. I'm excited to be back. Growing up in Brookline with a long tradition of success at the high school level in athletics, I dreamed about being a warrior. I looked up to the students at the high school. I went to the camps and clinics, and that gave me a sense of belonging in Brookline, a belonging at the high school. And I think I have a tremendous responsibility to provide that for the students of Brookline. The great thing about Brookline High School, or one of the many great things, is that every student can find their niche. High school athletics are one space within many where students can find themselves and find a sense of belonging. I'm excited to continue that. I'm excited to work collaboratively to try to align athletics with academics and to continue to grow our programs and hopefully, win many state championships as well.
Now, we will turn our attention to Zoom for our colleagues that have joined us there. First up, we have Ms. Rachel Cragan. She is our new interim coordinator at BEEP. Rachel is serving as the interim program coordinator with BEEP for the 22-23 school year. Ms. Cragan has worked with BEEP and the public schools of Brookline since 2006, when she first joined the district as a special education paraprofessional. She then transitioned to a special education teacher and participated in other roles within the community, including PTO teacher representative, program mentor, and teacher in summer programs, as well as a school improvement plan committee member. Ms. Cragan holds a Master of Education in Moderate Disabilities, pre-K through 8, from Cambridge College, and a Master of Education in Organizational Management from Indicott's College of Educational Leadership Institute program. And with that, let's welcome Ms. Cragan.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gillery, and school committee. I am so happy to be here and completely honored to be sitting right in the office that I was hired in as a paraprofessional 18 years ago that I am now sitting in. Each day that I come in, it is absolutely mind-blowing. Such an honor. I'm so excited to be celebrating 50 years of BEEP this year. We are going to have a big celebration of that and all of the milestones that we get to celebrate about being inclusive and having all of our-- sorry, Lynch Center for you-- all of our celebrations throughout the year of our celebrations throughout the year that we can't wait to invite you all to, to get our name out there and have you all be a part of our BEEP parties at the Lynch Center Playground. This is going to be a big one for us, a big year. So I'm excited to be a part of it. I'm so happy to be working alongside Margaret and Erin, two amazing leaders to be learning from, and I'm so, so ready for this. So, thank you so much for having me here, and I look forward to a great one.
We will keep the BEEP line rolling and introduce Ms. Margaret Everhart as the Interim BEEP Principal. Margaret has been appointed as Interim BEEP Principal for the 22-23 school year. Ms. Everhart has worked with BEEP since 2017, first as an Extended Day Director at Lynch in Putterham, and subsequently as the Program Coordinator for the past four years. Since 2018, she has managed the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Program for PSB, which provides child development services to Brookline families. Prior to joining PSB, Ms. Everhart was an educator at the Children's Happy Day School in West Roxbury. Mrs. Everhart is recognized for her volunteer experience in Milton through her service in the Milton Foundation for Education and the Milton School Committee. In addition to a Master's Degree in Teaching from Columbia University, Ms. Everhart most recently earned a Graduate Certificate in Early Child Technology from Tufts University. And with that, we welcome Ms. Everhart.
Thank you so much, Dr. Guillory and school committee. It is an honor to be here this evening as the Interim Principal of BEEP. It is a position in my wildest dreams I never could have imagined that I would have, and it's an opportunity of a lifetime, and I'm honored and privileged to work for the Public Schools of Brookline, to work for the families and children of Brookline, and particularly the youngest of our students. And it's really an honor for me, too, to have Laura Cleves here this evening as a student representative. I've known Laura since she was a young, a young person, and she actually was a student at Happy Day when I worked there. And it is like, it is close circle for me, and Laura, you are just a gift to the Public Schools of Brookline, and your parents must be so proud of you. So I'm looking forward to a great year. It's an honor to work with Rachel and Erin. It's an honor to work with all of you, and we are looking forward to moving the program forward and celebrating 50 years of inclusive education in the Public Schools of Brookline. So, thank you again, and congratulations to all the new members as well.
And we will close out our introductions tonight with the Lawrence School. So next up, we have Ms. Dominique Ferdinand. Dominique has served the Public Schools of Brookline for the past 24 years. We are pleased that she has been selected to be the Vice Principal at Lawrence, where she has taught since 1998. Ms. Ferdinand's dedication to her students and the broader Lawrence community is unmatched, and her enthusiasm for working with students make her a terrific addition to the Lawrence School leadership team. Her passion for reading and mathematics, and her dedication to professional learning groups with her colleagues, provide the strong foundation for her new leadership position. Ms. Ferdinand also led the PSB Summer Program, Bringing Books to Life, from 2010 to 2018. In 2017, the Brookline Education Foundation honored Ms. Ferdinand with the Ernest R. Cavalier Award for Excellence in Teaching. Ms. Ferdinand holds a Master of Education from Leslie University and is expected, and we're going to hold you to this, Ms. Ferdinand, to earn her Doctorate of Education in Leadership and Education Policy from Boston University in 2023. So, give a warm Brookline welcome to Ms. Ferdinand, our new Vice Principal at Lawrence.
Thank you. Thank you for the warm introduction, Dr. Guillory, and thank you, school committee, and thank you, everyone, for being here, and I'm so excited to be here. I, I mean, I, there was a lot of information there. I mean, I have to add to that that I'm a parent, and I do have two daughters who are, one have graduated from the Brookline schools, and one is a ninth grader at the freshman campus, so she's very excited, so I'm hearing lots of good things. I am excited for this new role, and as it will allow me to make a difference, not only in the early childhood ages, but also all the way to the eighth grade. It's been such a pleasure to connect with my old students, my alum, who's been, I've been missing because of the pandemic, but also it's been exciting to build new relationships with the new students. I'm also super excited to work with the staff and administration to continue to learn and continue to improve my craft. So, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, and have a good evening.
And finally, tonight, we introduce Mr. David Lindner. David joins the Public Schools of Brookline this year as the Interim Vice Principal at Lawrence School. Mr. Lindner has previously served as a middle school mathematics teacher at Brown Middle School in Newton, and helped redesign and adapt seventh and eighth grade curriculum to accommodate students with disabilities and students who are English learners. Mr. Lindner also led several equity-focused projects in Newton Public Schools, such as a Coaching and Math Team for Tenacity Challenge, an annual academic scholarship competition for Latinx and African-American students. Outside the classroom, Mr. Lindner is the Director of the Maze Makers Enrichment Summer Program in Weston, which provides seven-to-15-year-olds the opportunity to learn about web design, photography, architecture, robotics, economics, and leadership development. Mr. Lindner earned his Master's of Education in Educational Policy, Organization, and Leadership from Stanford University. Please welcome Mr. Lindner.
Thank you, Dr. Guillory, and thank you to the school committee for having me here tonight. It's really an honor to be joining you. In talking to staff and families and kids in the preseason and first few days, everyone was unanimous in telling me what a wonderful place Lawrence is and how lucky I am to join that community. And as a newcomer to PSB, that's really wonderful and comforting to hear, but it's also a lot to look up to. It's been a whirlwind first week-plus so far, but I'm so thrilled to tell you that so far, the experience really matches the reputation. It's such an honor to get to share this work with a caring and passionate community and leadership team. There's so much investment in community and personal growth, and I'm really excited to see what the rest of the year has in store. Thanks.
Do any school committee members have questions for any of the newly introduced staff? Go ahead, Mariah.
I actually don't have a question. I just want to say that this was fabulous, and Laura started the like hits coming and the amazing staff that we have, and we're onboarding this here is just really exciting, and thank you all. I'm really, really excited.
Anyone else with questions or comments?
I do, David.
Oh, go ahead, Helen.
Yeah, I'm trying to be good and raise my hand and not just blurt out like I often do. First of all, I want to welcome everybody. You know, you're an amazing group, just listening to your backgrounds, but I'd like to highlight the people who have grown up professionally here, who I know, and the people who not only grew up professionally, but also attended and graduated from Brookline schools. You know, both Malcolm and Kyle, who I know both very well. It's amazing, you know, that you have devoted your entire lives to Brookline, and I can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you've done, and I know what you've done because I've been here and I've seen it. Kyle, I'm thrilled you came back, and Malcolm, thank you, thank you for all the work that you've done, along with everybody else. Obviously, I'm not, I'm highlighting them because of my connections to them over the years, so thank you, and good luck this year.
All right, if there aren't any further questions or comments, we can continue with the superintendent's report. And for those of you who were introduced, if you would like to stay, you're certainly welcome to do so, but under no obligation to. Thank you very much for being here.
So, we have some photos that highlight the first week of school, and I don't need to say any more than Laura has already said about, you know, a rainy start, but it picked up very quickly, so we're excited to have so many photos. I think that's one of the pictures, actually, of the high school students in the auditorium there, receiving their orientation, but lots of happy students, happy parents, and happy teachers and educators, administrators. All of our team has done an amazing job of preparing our schools to be ready, so huge shout-out to our operations and facilities folks for getting our buildings ready, and then thank you, a huge thank you to our teachers for their time and dedication and what they are doing for our students each and every day, and certainly our administrators for shepherding us through all of this. So, thank you to all of you. A report on summer programming, I'm going to ask Leslie to come up, Deputy Superintendent Leslie Ryan Miller, to come up and share information about our summer programs.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Guillory. Good evening, school committee members. I'm very excited to share this update because a lot of hard work and love went into this, and I feel like this is something that we can really highlight as a success for our district and just our summer work. So, I will get started, and I'm operating from two computers, so please bear with me. All right, so this first slide just gives an overview of our programming this summer, of various programming, programming that we had in place for various age groups across the systems and located in different schools. First, what's shown here is Project Discovery and Star Academy. Both of those programs actually fed into the BASE Smart Summers Program, which is Brookline Adult and Community Education. There are some real lessons learned from this collaboration that I'm going to share at the end of the presentation, and just overall, I'm going to share really what work this summer and what were some of our areas for challenge that we're focused on as we think and already start planning for next year. Some of our other programs, Steps to Success Summer Connections, the Calculus Project, BAS Summer School, and Extended School Year, which we ran in three locations for early childhood, upper elementary, and then high school and adult-age students.
Do you mind, sorry, you said ES5 was in three locations, it was pre-K, K-8, and the elementary?
Yes, yes. Okay, so the first program, and I will go through these fairly briefly, but please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Our first program, Project Discovery, ran for kindergarten through fifth-grade students. It was housed at the Ruffin Ridley School, which was a real success in terms of the location of this school. We had a lot of families that cited that this was easier access in terms of getting to the site. The program ran from July 5th through the 29th, and the director was Kristen Gray. The focus of this program is really literacy support for some of our most vulnerable learners, making sure that they don't have summer slide, and really bolstering their achievement over the summer as well. We had small class sizes, sizes, which I think was a huge component, and we also had co-teachers, so we had two teachers in every classroom. So, students were really able to get the differentiated support and attention that they needed, so that, I think, was a real highlight of this program. You'll see a sample schedule of what the day looked like. This program typically runs, or has always ran, in the morning, and then we release students in the afternoon. And one thing that we know is that for working parents, myself being a working parent, programs that are not going the length of the day are really difficult for families. So, we were able to connect Project Discovery to BASE Smart Summers to provide the afternoon programming, so that there was a continuous full day of out-of-school time support throughout the day. And I think that this is one of the reasons why we saw an increase in our enrollment. We were able to increase our enrollment in Project Discovery by 100 students, and so we're really, really proud of that. I will also share, in a moment, I'm going to talk about Star Academy, but one of the things that was incredibly helpful was that we were able to use Title I funding to pay for the fees associated with the BASE afternoon programming for any student that qualifies for financial assistance in the Public Schools of Brookline. So, that was just a real collaboration in terms of figuring out, how can we use Title I funding that we have that is specifically for some of our most vulnerable learners, and how does that just make it easier for families to attend, quite frankly?
Leslie, was that the first time that you've had?
That was the first time, yes, yes. So, really proud of that. Okay, let's see. All right, and the next program is Star Academy, and Mindy Paulo, our Director of our ELE program, was the Director for this program as well. She's here with us this evening, so she may want to say a few words, so you can feel free to come up, Mindy. She, and I got, I really need to shout her out, because summer is one of her busiest times as we're enrolling new students into the district. There's a lot of testing and DESI regulations that we need to stay on top of. Mindy made sure that both the fact that we stayed on top of that, and she also managed Star Academy and did a phenomenal job doing both, so huge shout-out to Mindy. This program, the focus is for our Metco and EL students, and one of the real kind of connections between those two populations is that we have students who are new to Brookline, both who are in our EL program and both who are coming from the Metco program. So, while their needs academically and in terms of language may not be the same, just the common thread of, you're new to Brookline, Brookline may not be where you live, but this is your home while you're in school here, and so, and beyond. And so, there were a lot of friendships made in this program, which Mindy and I were actually talking about today, and so there are really some heartwarming stories that she shared with me. But again, the objectives, focusing on the development of skills, study in terms of content, vocabulary, various concepts, reinforcing instructional language, and opportunities to enhance social and academ, social relationships and academic language. Oh, and this program served 320 students, and we did have a slight increase in this program. We increased by about 25 students, and we also did use Title I funding to increase the number of classrooms. We're going to need to think about how we can continue to do that, because for this particular program, we did have students that were wait-listed that wanted to participate, and we weren't able to accommodate, so we're going to think about how we can make that happen in upcoming years. Next is the Steps to Success Summer Connections Program. This program ran over the month of July and is for rising eighth and ninth graders who are in our, who are in Steps to Success. And this past summer, the students attended the Calculus Project in the morning, and then in the afternoon, had various partnerships, some with BIG, they offered a media class, and various other classes that were offered in the afternoon, so it was a good balance of academic experience, as well as some work experience and enrichment classes for students. We had 37 students in that program, and I think that something to also note is that this is not the only program through Steps to Success. Also, we had 22 BHS students who were placed in summer internships, and we also had 66 students who were enrolled in various camps throughout Brookline, so that includes some that I know of, Boston, Boston Brookline Rec, as well as the Park School hosted a number of our students, and so, again, the continuity and the importance of out-of-school time and making sure that our students are busy and engaged and safe, and so, you know, there were a number of students who had access to that. The Calculus Project, so this is a program, I got a chance to visit all the programs. I'd say I probably visited the Calculus Project the most, and it was great to see our students hard at work. We had 78 students attend that are entering grades eight through 12. The program took place from July 5th through July 29th, and Megan Kennedy Justice and Lisa Rodriguez were the Directors of those programs. We also had student supports that also served as advisors to students that were participating in the program, and also provided just additional differentiation and support in terms of the teachers and leaders that were there to serve as students enrolled in the Calculus Project. So, I won't read the description because it's here for you. I think many people are familiar with the Calculus Project, so it was good to give students that additional time to work with educators just around math, math engagement, and really bolstering their mathematical skills and mathematical thinking.
And Deputy Miller, Ryan Miller, I'll add a parent testimonial to that. I was stopped in the parking lot here of Town Hall, and one of our rising ninth graders, our ninth graders now, her mother stopped me and said, "We need to make sure we keep this program, keep it alive and going," because my daughter was school-phobic, and she attended every single day of this. My daughter did not like math, and on the second day, she came home and said, "You know what? I think I can do math." And so, this, I think it's a testimony to what you're describing about the, these types of programs and the impact that it's having on students and families. So, thank you all for making this happen for the students.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Guillory, and I will say, across the programs, we heard a lot of positive feedback from families, just around the programming, the fact that it was for a good chunk of the summer, and so that students were engaged during that time. So, you know, we'll continue to think about how we can engage more students and take on more students in future years. And then, last but not, oh, actually, we have another one after this. This is just BHS Summer School, not just, it is BHS Summer School. This was run by Jen Martin, took place through the month of July, and this is just an opportunity for students to take classes that they needed to graduate, or where they might have needed extra support. This is a time to make use of out-of-school time and get that additional support in the summer months. So, you see here, there are some enrichment classes, but also just core academic courses that our students may have needed some additional time with, and so, this also was well-attended. And I also would just like to say, a number, a good number, of our students receive financial aid to attend this program. So, that's something that we want to consider in the future, to make sure that we have the greatest amount of access possible, and so we want to make sure that that funding remains in place. And then, last but not least, BASE Summer Program, I already talked a little bit about this. BASE runs, it's Brookline Adult and Community Education. They run programming during vacation weeks, February and April, and also in the summers, and it's open to the public, but we worked really hard to create a partnership to ensure that both students from Star Academy and Project Discovery were able to attend. Michelle McGlon is the Director. She was so flexible, so easy to work with, so committed, and so, this proved, again, to be a real success for us, and we really want to continue this partnership. We actually have, in two of our Title I schools, one of those, actually, both We actually have, in two of our Title I schools, one of those, actually, both of the schools would like to run vacation camps. And one of them in particular, the Lincoln School, said, "Ah, I heard what happened over the summer. We'd like to partner with Base over the vacation to do, the, the February or April vacation to do something similar." So we're trying to replicate this practice for, for other times and opportunities in the future. I think that is my last, oh, no, I'm so sorry, there's another program. And I, this is last but certainly not least, ESY. ESY ran at three sites, BEEP, Runkel, and the Ridley School. Erin Hurney was the director of BEEP. Liza Casal was the director of Arcata Eight, and Steve Similaris did our high school and young adults. This is a program, I don't know, Lisa, if you'd like to say anything, please feel free. The, the, the description of the program is here. One of the things that we know is, just like any other program, this is incredibly important for our families that have young children that may have additional needs. It's really important for our parents that, that they have some time to rejuvenate and refresh and know that their children are in a safe space that is productive for their children, and ESY was that. And so a couple of times when I visited the program, very similar to Dr. Gillery, I came at drop-off and was greeted by some parents who, you know, I introduced myself, and they just sang the praises of every site where I met parents. So I just wanted to, to, to share that. And again, just shout out our educators. I mean, summer is a time where we really want people to rejuvenate, and we had a number of committed educators that took on this work, no complaints, they were happy to do it, and, and I'm very thankful for that. Because teacher, having certified teachers that we know in front of our children is really important, that's high leverage, and teachers rose to the occasion and came through for us. So I'm, I'm very thankful for everybody. And before I go onto the next slide, I did just want to, you know, review some of the things that really worked for us and some of the things that we're thinking about revamping. So again, educators first and foremost were something that worked. Low class sizes was incredibly important. We figured out that location matters. FRR, really, we heard from parents, we heard from folks that worked in the program, we heard from directors, that that seemed to be a really good site because of location, and quite frankly, because they have working AC. And so that is something for us to think about in future years. I'll jump into what's not working really quick because it was really one of the only ones. We did have some of our programs in schools that are not air-conditioned, or parts of the building are air-conditioned, are not air-conditioned. That was a real challenge. Star Academy was one of those programs at Lincoln, and so we had to come up with some, you know, last-minute plans for how to keep our staff and our children safe and cool, and that was a real balancing act. And we don't want to use time for that in the future. So we're going to work more closely with Matt Gillis to make sure that we are in spaces and places that have working AC 100% of the time. Back to what's working, again, the partnership with Base in terms of the increased enrollment, the financial assistance, both via Title I and through our own Public Schools of Brookline Admin and Finance Department. The increase in the number of students that we saw throughout the summer was huge. And so those are some of our big highlights. And then one more thing that we are going to work on for next year, we're really thinking about how to do a central registration. Every summer program had a different way to register students. And so you, if, if you have children that are in multiple programs or multiple ages, then parents have to navigate different sites and different processes, and that was a challenge for them, and it was a challenge for us, quite frankly. So we're really working to see what we can take on so that there's one summer school registration site across pre-K to 12, so that everyone knows how to, to use that technology. And I'll stop there. Are there any questions, comments?
Maria?
Thanks, let me turn. Thanks, Leslie. This was so great. I feel like the hits keep coming, so. I have some questions. So one of the, I think it's great that FRR was one of the sites, and I was just curious how you handled this for the students in South Brookline, particularly for those who don't, who don't have a car. How were those students accommodated at Brooklyn Ridley? Or were they accommodated?
Sure, so I'm not sure that they were accommodated, quite frankly. I think that they made it work. Certainly Steps to Success stepped in with some of, we don't have Steps to Success at Baker, but in terms of some schools that have the Steps program where it was hard for children to get to the program, we organized walking school buses where the Steps advisors met students at a particular place, and then they walk together. In terms of your question specifically around South Brookline, we really have to rethink that, and I think we are going to have to add a transportation component as we think about this next year.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I thought, as you think about some of these things to fix, if we haven't done that, I mean, I think it's really important. And, and my second question is sort of tied to this, but it's more like a broader of their, were their families, and I'm not sure, you said that everyone, there was no waitlist for some of the programs, and maybe some of them were, there were. I guess my question is, were there families who would have wanted to do Project Discovery specifically or some of the other programs? Other than just capacity problems, were there other things that, like, held participation back?
Sure.
You know, barriers to participation, I guess?
Sure, that's a really great question. And I should have said, I neglected to say this, a number of these programs were invitation-only. So Star Academy was invitation-only and Project Discovery was invitation-only. So I think we do want to think about just how we can continually increase access. I think with Project Discovery, that's a very special, they're doing very specialized work, so I'm not sure it would be open to the public, but it, it still is.
But it's more like, for people who you thought in Project, if there was a child who you thought would have benefited from Project Discovery, and their family couldn't make it work for some reason, how do we make sure that every child that the school system identifies as benefiting from one of these programs doesn't have some sort of systemic barrier to participation? Rather than, you know, just the capacity issue, but the other things?
Sure, sure. So I think it's really about learning what those barriers are?
Yeah.
And then addressing them. So I think transportation is one we need to do better with. I think extending the, the program and just the partnership with Base, that was a huge barrier that we were able to mitigate. So that, I think, was the, the primary one that we kind of hurtled that we got over. The financial piece, certainly, for Base was huge, as well as for BHS Summer School, the fact that we have financial assistance there. You know, the other thing, I'm sure there are others, but we're really working to get these programs in place earlier and earlier every year. I mean, even for myself with my daughter's camp registration, where I usually register her in April, for whatever reason, they were asking me to register in February. And so if a family has already committed to another program, then the chances of them then attending our programming, if we haven't told them prior to that, it really decreases those chances. So I think we really need to have these program, programs in place by like end of January, which, that's tough because that's like tomorrow.
Right.
But, um, you know, and, and we've already started planning for next year. Just last week, we met with at least the K to eight directors to talk about what were the challenges, what worked, so that we can start thinking about that as we prepare.
Thanks. I just have another two, one comment, one question. Speaking of the Base partnership and using the Title I funds, I think that's like fabulous. I'm so thrilled, you know, it's really great. I, I just wonder, I don't know if you've already considered this, is this something that we have looked at, given the issues around for some families participating in extended day, in other, like in BEEP extended day and stuff? Is that something that's been explored at all? I don't know if they can extend that far. I don't know how great the funding is, but.
So Title, Title I funding for like out of, after-school programming?
Right, especially for BEEP, which is a half-day program, and I know that some families have been limited from participating in BEEP because of the challenges of not necessarily having vouchers accepted by schools, schools for children, whatever the program's called, schools for children, right? So I'm just wondering if you've explored that at all?
So, you know, we haven't, and, and BEEP might be a little bit of a challenge because one of the things with the Title I funding is it needs to, it, it needs to be directed in certain places. We have three Title I schools, the high school, Lincoln, and FRR. So there is, you know, that is something for us to consider. You know, we haven't thought about it as much in the younger grades, but we are using some Title I funding this year to support specifically high school students with online tutoring at the teen center. So we know that a lot of our young people, especially in high school, they spend a lot of time at the teen center. And so we are looking to engage with an organization that does some online virtual tutoring with small groups of children. And the child or the group, the small group gets the same tutor every time. So it's not a diff, you know, there's that consistency. And so we're piloting something this year with about 15 to 20 high school students where they will come to the teen center and they will, they can play ball, they can do everything, you know, take advantage of the maker space, but then also engage in this academic support there as well. So I think that's going to be our first entree into how we can successfully use Title I funds to support students, at least in academic capacity. But we, we can certainly think about out-of-school time in terms of afternoon, after-school care too.
And I just have one last comment, which was that I liked the idea of like the BHS Summer Program and thinking about more of that. Like, I work at Northeastern, Northeastern's, because of co-op, it's a year-round, they don't have like summer vacation in the same way that many places do. And as we think about, like, there's so many opportunities at BHS, and students, particular students in special education often feel limited because of their participation in Learning Center from necessarily being able to participate in electives. So how we can not just provide those students, but all students with some, like, make it more normalized to be able to do some classes over the summer, to be able to explore things that, for whatever range of reasons you couldn't do during the academic year, I'd love being able to normalize that side of it, not just the catching up and, and the review side of it, too.
Sure, sure. But just using it as an opportunity.
Exactly, as an opportunity, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Makes total, total sense.
I want to just jump in on Mariah's last point there, so I had a similar thought, that when you mentioned the photography and digital drawing electives, how, how popular were those? Were those classes filled?
They were filled, yes.
Do you know if there's been any contemplation about expanding that program for next summer and in what areas that would be?
Um, I think we definitely want to have that program in place again, and I think that we're always looking just to expand opportunities for access for students. So we haven't got that into the, the nitty-gritty yet, but, you know, I guess I could safely say yes, because we're always looking to expand all of our out-of-school time opportunities. I mean, that's one of the things that we learned post-COVID, is that, you know, we can really use, we can leverage this out-of-school time in really creative ways that support students both academically, socially, emotionally, and also help families. You know, this is, this is off-topic, but one of the things that's been incredibly popular with our PSB families that are in the MEATCO program is that we've used some of those MEATCO grant dollars to provide after-school programming for children in the MEATCO program, which is incredibly helpful because they're coming from Boston. And so, you know, if, it's harder to get to your children if you don't live here. And so that is something that was incredibly helpful, and we saw such an increase in demand this year that we weren't able to provide it for everyone. And so we're going to look at the grant again and, and really come up with a plan to make sure that anyone who wants that out-of-school time support can get it. So I just say that to say we're always looking to increase these opportunities.
And also to Mariah's point about sort of normalizing summer school to be thought of as more of a summer session for anyone for a variety of purposes, do you sense that there would be sufficient appetite among our educators to take that on for academic subjects?
So that's a good question. I mean, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that they do have the desire. I think that last year or last summer, every district, when I talked to my counterparts in various districts, everybody was struggling to get teachers. And so the fact that we were able to staff these programs, and they were well-staffed, I mean, this wasn't like, you know, tape, duct tape. This was, we had solid folks there, they were there every day. I mean, we certainly were dealing with COVID still, and so that threw us a little bit of a curveball. But we had the educators that we needed, they really stepped up. So I'm, I'm hoping that if they did it last year, that they will continue to do that and we'll, we'll have more educators that want to participate. You know, the other piece to it, too, is we really thought about the compensation for our educators, and that was, that was raised considerably, and so that, that matters. So.
All right, thank you. Suzanne, I saw your hand raised, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Actually, one of my questions was about buses. So I, the MEATCO students have buses to get into town, or how do they get in?
I am, okay, thank you. I couldn't remember. Yes.
That was a yes?
Yes. I thought so, but then it was second guess.
And I was just wondering if you have any sense of the number of students who were invited but did not attend for any, for whatever reason? But were there a number of students that?
Sure, Mindy might be able to speak to Star. In terms of Project Discovery, we did have a list of about 600 students that we got either from literacy specialists or school leaders that we, you know, kind of compiled and then whittled down. And so we do want to think about with Project Discovery, how can we continue to increase the amount of slots that are available? By the end of registration, we were able to take everyone who had registered. The, the question is when we're, if we, if students have a need, we want to make sure that we can provide access to anyone who has a need. So we're always looking to increase Project Discovery. And, and of those 600 students, you know, the list went up and down. There were some people, some kiddos that were put on the list, and then some said, "Well, I don't think they need..." So there was kind of some vacillation there, but I don't know if that answers your question?
So, so essentially, 650 on the list, and we, we, we served 230, is that?
We served, so, so, but.
Well, no, that's Project Discovery.
Yep, but, but I guess from that list of about 600?
Yeah.
Not all of them kind of made the final.
Oh, okay.
Cut. When we really went back and looked at, who will this program primarily benefit? Who really needs it? I think we feel like the children who most need it got it, but I think we always want to expand access so that if there are children that maybe don't need as much support, but maybe their families want support for them, or their classroom teacher in that particular year wants support for them, that we can accommodate them also.
Thanks.
Anyone else, Andy?
Yeah, this is related, I think. I think, Leslie, I heard you say that there was a waitlist for Star Academy, but that's also an invitation-only program. And so what does it mean actually to be on a waitlist for an invitation?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, actual application process, so we obviously have five potential to be at Star Academy, and we look at the acceptance process. So we had just over four, and then this, why, so about two or so.
Okay, and so the, is this a question? So we've been talking about expanding access, but here it seems like we also need to expand capacity, like what was the, was the limiting factor here, staffing or space?
So it really comes down to budget. We had set aside funds, and OTL was terrific at supporting us to add some additional classes, but we capped out the budget, the funding that we had available, and had to just determine a certain number of classes that we could enroll our students in.
So with more funding, you could have hired more qualified staff and, and served everyone you wanted to serve?
Yeah, our staffing is just over 40 educators, all different roles. We have classroom teachers, we have par professionals, we have teacher assistants who are our high school students who come in and work with us. We have adjustment counselors, we have onsite coordinators, we have a pretty robust staff at Star Academy. It was not easy to staff the program this summer, full transparency. It took a lot of recruiting efforts, for sure. And we also aim to have a very diverse staff so that it's really reflective of the students that are in our program, and that's a very intentional effort that we make. But we had a terrific, really outstanding staff. I, I do think the larger we grow, it is difficult to get staff to commit in the summer. That has been our experience. We've also examined the timing. We are the only program in August, and that's also intentional so that our students can participate in the July programs as well as August for those who are eligible. But I don't know if that has any impact on the availability of staffing. But it, a combination of staffing and budget has really prevented us from being able to expand the program even more. And the program has actually expanded every single year. So we're in the ninth year, we just completed our ninth year, and it has grown tremendously, actually, over those nine years, but we did have a waitlist this year.
Thanks. Jennifer? Thanks. Jennifer?
I actually, I was just thinking, I have two things. One, when I heard your question, Suzanne, I actually thought at first that you were asking, of the number of people who accepted, what was the actual attendance rate? So I was just wondering if, but your question was different. So I guess my question is, do we know or have a sense of how many families accepted spots but then did not actually attend the program? I'm just starting, I'm thinking about that 600 number that goes down to whatever, like the 320 or whatever we had up there, and how many spaces we ended up having. I don't know if we know that number, but that was actually what I thought you were originally asking. And then, so we may not have that information, but I think that also affects sort of, sometimes families accept spots and then there are absences.
But anecdotally, is there any sort of sense generally to Jen's question?
Just if there was anyone that accepted and then did not come?
Yeah, or just, you know.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
So it's pretty full. I guess that's what I'm wondering, is like how, like how consistent it is.
Sure, are you, but you're talking specifically about Project Discovery.
Or just summer programming in general, not necessarily just Project Discovery, but any of, like, any of the summer programs. I don't know, it would be interesting if there are some programs have, were more consistent and there was, if there were differences between the programs. Do you have information for that for?
Sure.
Like, I would, knowing now what I knew about families applying and having a waitlist, that there would be spaces, but what data do you have?
Sure, so we started out with 320 students who were accepted into the program. 297 participated in all three weeks of the program. There were some others who came in for like a week and then did not complete the program, but 297 students completed the program. And of those, about 61% are English learners, 38% are Metco students, and 1% are students in both programs.
I'm sorry, Mindy, could you tell me the number that were accepted? What was?
320.
320, okay. And you said?
297.
And then you gave me some percentages?
61% were students who identified as English learners, 38% Metco, and 1% are students who are enrolled in both programs.
I was going to ask for the cover of, that's just, it's just interesting to sort of know, like, sort of who's in front of us. That's great, thank you. The other thing that I was wondering about, actually, I wanted to just echo. A couple of people have already mentioned the BHS summer school electives. And I think David and Mariah asked what I was curious about, which was what was the participation in sort of the digital photography or the other more elective pieces that were the non-core academics? And it sounds like it was, they were full. And just sort of voice, you know, if there's, if there's interest, if there's appetite for filling the classes, I do, I do think it's something we've heard, especially among students who take an LC block that can't access those electives, especially students of special education programs or students who, for a variety of reasons, can't access the electives that they might want, that if we're able to do that and offer that, I mean, staffing may be tricky, but I like the idea, whether or not it's feasible to enact it. I just wanted to sort of throw my echo into loving that idea. Not that it can happen, but it's a great idea.
I understand that. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jennifer.
No, 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 that's it. I saw Suzanne's hand over there.
I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead, Suzanne.
I just wondered if we've thought at all in the future about early college courses. And I know many districts are offering such courses, and I'm just, you know, that might be something in the summer that we may have an interest from our families and students. I don't know. Or it could also be during the school year. But if, thinking about internships in the summer or in these enrichment kind of classes that I'm thinking of, but actually even some academic that would be kind of beyond what we can usually offer. And you do, I think you do that with a partnership, with a local college, a community college.
It used to exist, I thought. I remember when I was at BHS, people took classes at, maybe it was Mass Bay? I don't remember. There was something, I thought, where they had an articulation agreement, yeah.
Now, I understand that.
They had it mostly for math, for kids who had sort of gone through all the math that we could offer and needed college math.
I understand that Matt Gillis has his hand up on the Zoom session. I can't see that, but go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so I just wanted to answer a question about transportation. So a bus was provided for ESY to get people to Ridley and Runcle, and that did cover all, all, all areas of town. We run typically a big yellow school bus as well as vans for the, for the summer programs. I believe the STAR program had Metco transportation provided, but Mindy could correct me on that. And as far as space goes, we've been growing a little bit over the last few years with our summer programs. And we've been trying to put the programs in spaces that have, you know, air conditioning or climate control through like a displaced chilled air system. So Runcle and Ridley, and when Driscoll comes online for summer of 2024, we're going to actually try and give Runcle a break because they've been open every summer since they've opened because they've had a decent amount of air conditioning and was one of our primary places for summer school. So moving from a three-section school to a four-section school would give us a little more capacity, as well as 22 Tappan was where the high school held their summer school program this summer as well. So pretty much everywhere we operate, we're moving towards the climate-controlled areas and a little bit more capacity. But staffing is always a challenge, and I'm familiar with it because we book and schedule the rooms, and we try to do that in a way so we can also get all the buildings clean for the first day of school, like the STAR program tends to follow when Project Discovery is over.
All right, thank you. Mariah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say one thing, which is curriculum and finance are planning with Leslie a joint committee meeting, I think in December, January-ish?
January, February.
January, February-ish to talk about summer programming for next year because of all these overlap of issues of what we do, how we pay for it. It's sort of a joint topic.
Collaboration.
Yep.
Very relevant.
Very.
Collaboration.
And very exciting to hear all the amazing advances that have happened this year.
I think it was a really good summer, and, you know, to Matt's point, I assumed everyone knew that ESY came with transportation due to just the law. But I think to Mariah's point, and of course, we want to, and the law, but to Mariah's point, how can we expand transportation for our other programs like Project Discovery?
All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation. It was quite informative and leaves us with a lot to think about, as you could see from our questions and comments. Is there anything else for the superintendent's report?
There are a few more, if we can, we're going to try to drive through them quickly because I know we're well past our allotted time. So I think these next two are yours, Deputy Ryan Miller.
Sure, I'm going to go pretty quickly through this, but just wanted to call everyone's attention to the fact that we now have updated curriculum overviews for kindergarten through eighth grade up on the website. For me, at least, coming into this role last year, this was really important to me because the information that we were sharing was not accurate. And so, you know, at least when I think about, you know, what my daughter Leila is learning, I want to know what the expectations are for her. I want to know what I can expect her to learn over the course of the year and how I can support her. And so when there's inaccurate information, that's not helpful. And quite frankly, a number of inquiries or calls that we get from families, because the information posted wasn't accurate, I really needed to take time to sit down with each family and talk to them about, you know, run through their questions, talk about the curriculum, when really it could have been as simple as directing them to accurate information that's publicly posted. So I want to shout out our curriculum coordinators. They worked really hard on this last year. And when I first asked them, you know, it's definitely the eye rolls because they have a lot on their plate already, and this was no easy feat. But they worked incredibly hard, and I'm really proud of the product. But just really quickly, you know, the overviews, you know, they're living documents, so there is certainly room for change as we update our curriculum and make adjustments to ensure that we're aligned to the mass frameworks. And also now, the overviews show pilot programs. So things that we're piloting, parents can also read about those as well. So this just gives a quick view, and folks can see much better on the website, but just a comparison to what was posted and now what is posted. I think just visually, they're easier to read. But in terms of what's changed, they're now accurate. They really outline the key practices that are in place in classrooms that teachers are utilizing. They outline what students should be able to do. They have links to the state frameworks. And then also at the bottom of each grade and each content area, we share practices that families can use at home to support their students in these content areas, and really focusing on ways that are developmentally appropriate to use at home. So I think that's all.
Thank you very much, Deputy Ryan Miller. Brief COVID-19 update, we shared information, I think, at the last session. But I want to highlight the next vaccination clinic will be Wednesday, September 21st, at Roughen Ridley. And again, our focus this year is on vaccination and ensuring that we maintain a very high vaccination rate. So we are well aware that the CDC has recommended individuals 12 and up to receive the updated booster, and so we will be working to make sure that we keep.
Is it only 12 and up?
For the update, this is for the boost, the new boost?
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought the booster was for younger than that, too.
We'll double check.
Oh, yeah, double check, because I could have sworn I've got something else in my doctor's office, which doesn't mean they were right, but, yeah.
I trust Tricia.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just hearing differently from me about it, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll make sure. But the takeaway here is the next clinic is the 21st.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, before you go on. Perrin asked me three questions, which you may not know, but I'll ask them. I should have sent these along before. Is Panel Four still going, engaged as a, I'll ask you the three, and then you can, like, is it, you know, on-call? How is the, is there an ongoing relationship with Panel Four? The second one is, the dashboard is down, but is the district still tracking cases? And then the third one is if there's any sort of ongoing masking, go, no-go decision-making being maintained this year?
So for, as far as Panel Four, the big group, as we traditionally use them, they are sort of on an on-call basis, but there's a smaller group of them that will meet with Segal, Tricia, and myself as needed. That was question one. Question two is.
Are you still tracking cases?
Are we still tracking cases? We're no longer required to track cases, but we are certainly watching for trends. If we see an uptick in a classroom or in a school, we'll keep, be mindful of those. And then number three was.
Masking, go, no-go.
Masking, no-go. That's, again, we're working very closely with Segal on that. And what she said was we will use a combination of factors, but we'll remain in conversation about that, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. National Hispanic Heritage Month officially began today. Originally started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week. This 30-day event celebrates, commemorates, and honors the contributions made by Hispanic and Latinx people to the United States. And so we'll have information, more information can be found on our multicultural calendar that's on our webpage there. Preparation for Success or Paraprofessional Contract, the negotiations subcommittee met yesterday evening to begin its talks in thinking about how we proceed with the negotiations this year. And so, Andy, Dr. Lou will share a little bit more about that later, but we just want to acknowledge that the school committee negotiations team has begun its initial meetings. And the last slide, initially, when I was planning this slide, I was going to be announcing one thing, but I went to a meeting Tuesday, and so I'm going to announce something different. We started the strategic planning work this summer, both with the school committee and our leadership team across the district with an envisioning the future session. We contracted with Dr. Lori Licas, who's going to serve as our facilitator this year. And unfortunately, Dr. Licas had to step down. But she has recommended an additional facilitator who's experienced with planning for success, and I had a chance to meet with her Tuesday. And what she said was, "Dr. Guillory, I can't take Brookline on in the fall, but I can work with you all in the spring." So the initial work that Dr. Licas has started with us, we'll be able to utilize, she's in the process of synthesizing that, so we'll get that information now. But essentially, what I want to announce to the community is that the initial calendar of events that we had planned for the fall are not going to go as we had scheduled them. So we're going to continue to talk with Dr. Ruth Gilbert to see how she may be able to take us on to continue that work. So I just want to formally announce and also thank the BEF, who has, has, was paying for the work that we had contracted with Dr. Licas. And so I need to follow up with them to make sure that they're aware of this. But I just want to also thank them for their commitment, their ongoing commitment to the public schools of Brookline. And with that, that ends the superintendent's update for tonight. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And even though the shades are down, it must be a blue moon out there because not one person signed up for public comment. So that is going to allow us to move on to presentations and discussions of current issues.
I think that's my.
Go right ahead, Helen.
Yes, thank you. The blue moon was good because at least we're getting closer back to time. Some people are still having difficulty getting in, like Bernard Green. I'm hoping that Robin can help him and Jim Roger, or Jim's here, okay. So tonight, we're going to talk about the Pierce School. And as one of the co-chairs of the Pierce School Building Committee, along with select person Bernard Green and Building Commission Chair Janet Fearman, I am very excited to introduce to you the Pierce School Project's schematic design and final project budget for your approval tonight. It has taken since December of 2018, when we were first invited into eligibility to get to this point. It's actually taken longer because I think we started talking about Pierce back in 2004. But once the project is approved by the school committee, hopefully tonight, and the select board, it will be submitted to the MSBA by October 27th. The MSBA will then vote on approving the project at their board meeting on December 21st. That vote will be MSBA's commitment to support the project by reimbursing Brookline up to 37.04% of the eligible costs. That's the kicker there, the eligible costs. So it comes down to an effective rate of about 22.44% of the total cost. Brookline's reimbursement will be up to $44,816,070. The select board, along with their approval vote, will have to place a debt exclusion on the ballot at a special election to approve bonding. And then town meeting will have to have a two-thirds vote to appropriate the money approved at the special election. At that point, the project team can commence final design and begin the project. The project team will present the schematic design and the budget for the project tonight. And one thing that everybody should be aware of is that there's been input from many stakeholders in this process over the years. We will be introducing the school building committee in the presentation that you'll hear tonight. And they've done an incredible job of representing their constituencies and interests. And there'll be time for questions afterwards. So I will stop talking and allow the team to talk so that you can get a sense of where we're going. And you will be introduced to people as we go through. And I think this first piece will be started by, or am I going to be introducing the school building committee?
Go right ahead, Helen, you can do it.
Okay. Well, this is the, the school building committee consists of, as I said, Bernard Green and Janet Fearman, our co-chairs, myself, and to represent the town, Mel Klechner and Melissa Goff. To represent the building department, Daniel, Dan Bennett. To represent the advisory committee, it's the first time we've had an advisory committee member on. this is the first time we've had an advisory committee member on the School Building Committee, Carol Levin, to represent the Planning Board, Steve Hyken. Charlie Simmons represents, is the Director of Buildings, and Nancy O'Connor represents the Parks and Rec Commission, which I will, given aside, actually, right now, they met on Tuesday and approved us using the field for geothermal wells, the field across the street from the Pierce School. They had unanimous vote. Tony Giggly is the Building Department Project Administrator. Obviously, Dr. Guillory is our Superintendent of Schools. Andy Lou has been an assistant, a coworker with me on this project, incredibly helpful. Leslie Ryan Miller is the Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, who helped extremely with, together with Principal Yedoff, on the education plan to design the building. Our Administration Finance, Sam Rippon, is on the committee, along with Jamie Yedoff, our Pierce School Principal. Matt Gillis, our Director of Operations, is on the committee. And we always, on these School Building Committees, have parents who represent the parents in the district, but also have expertise. So Aaron Williams works for an architectural firm, and Narit Suker is an architect who also works as a, for an architectural firm. So it's a very experienced group that knows buildings and sites and recreation facilities, and everybody contributed quite a bit. Okay?
Fantastic. Thanks, Helen.
You're welcome. And I'm going to hand it off to Andy Deschain.
Thank you. My name's Andy Deschain, I'm a project manager for Left Field, we're the owner and project manager for this project. Just a preface to our presentation, there are a lot of slides, and some of them are sort of history, background information, so I'm going to buzz through some of those pretty quickly, so we can sort of stick with the really important stuff, but some of these are here just to give you some, just to remind everybody on some of the work that's been done in the past.
Andy, just so you know, everybody has this slide deck, and it will be put up on our site after we're done.
Correct, yep, great. Jim Rogers, anything you want to say at the beginning here?
We can't hear you, Jim.
Sorry, please continue, Andy, we'll move right through these early slides.
Great, sounds good, thanks. So the first few slides here are just a list of some of the public meetings that we've been having since 2019. So three slides here, we've got 21 public meetings in the beginning, 17 more in '21 and '22, another 22-plus to date, not including tonight, that we've been having in this year. So quite a few public meetings, a lot of opportunity for public input. For anybody that missed a public meeting or wanted to go back and see some of the information, everything that we've been doing has been put into, on, online, so the public can reach all this information if they, if they so desire. Quick note about the existing conditions and where we are, the key takeaway from this slide is that right now, there are 725 students in the K through 8 currently, and we are proposing 800 students in pre-K through 8 going forward. And now I think it's time for the principals.
Yeah, I can jump in here, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to look at some pictures here that we're taking at various locations on campus. Teaching at Pierce School is made much more challenging by the inadequate facilities. Unit A, which is pictured here, is home to 18 classrooms and our library. Teachers have to work to limit distractions for other classrooms and are constantly monitoring both their own and student volumes. This makes offering opportunities for student collaboration especially challenging. During MCAS, students in three grade levels must all work at a near silent volume for the duration of all the days that all grades are testing. In Unit C, which is where our second-grade classrooms are, teachers have to deal with the echoes created by five stacked classrooms with no doors. Our teachers who work in the historic building are isolated from most of their colleagues, and our staff in the Spurber Education Center, also known as the SEC, are similarly isolated while also navigating teaching in spaces without walls. Pierce teachers all must make do with fewer teaching minutes than their other Brookline counterparts, because we need to allow so much more transition time than other schools as students travel both between buildings and back and forth across the bridge. This amounts to as many as 18 days of instruction lost each year to transition time. And finally, our staff lack the physical classroom adjacencies that allow for routine and efficient communication with each other. Next slide, please. Obviously, things that impact teaching also impact learning. Learning at Pierce School can also be challenging. Students struggle with maintaining focus and attention in classrooms that have near constant auditory and visual distractions. This is especially challenging for our students who have anxiety or struggle with self-regulation. Our students with hearing issues or who have mobility challenges find our building simply cannot meet their needs. These families will often be steered toward another PSB school at registration. We've also had families request transfers to buffer zone schools due to their child's difficulty learning in an open space environment. This is the antithesis of what it means to be a community school, as we cannot even serve all members of our own community. Because bathrooms are few in number in some parts of the building, students can miss class time waiting in line for the restroom. Built to be a three-section school, Pierce now houses 150 more students than it was designed for. This means student lunches start at 10:10 a.m. and end at 12:50 p.m. It means we have PE classes in our auditorium. We have music and science classrooms that are significantly undersized. We have students receiving small group instruction in repurposed closets. We have classrooms that are shared by two teachers, each teaching entirely different grade levels simultaneously. Our building simply does not serve the needs of our students. Next slide. Despite many efforts to make the building more accessible over the years, as you'll see in this picture, there is no way to bring the existing structure into compliance. Bathrooms and doorways are too small to accommodate wheelchairs, and in some cases, too tight to navigate with crutches. The SEC is entirely disconnected from the rest of the campus and can only be reached by navigating both the garage and several sidewalks on busy streets. The historic building has no elevator. The elevator in the main building is so small that a wheelchair cannot turn in it. The lift in the historic building was designed, I'm sorry, the lift in the SEC was designed to move boxes up and down levels, not people. We've had to ask middle school students on crutches to scoot up and downstairs, and elementary parents to carry their injured children up and down the stairs multiple times each day. We have a student who was in a serious accident this summer, and we are deeply concerned about how they will safely navigate our school upon release from the hospital. We've had substitute teachers show up and be unable to remain here because the building is not accessible, and we've had parents unable to visit their child's classroom because there was no way to get a wheelchair to that space. Brookline is a town that has publicly stated its commitment to equity and inclusion, and the current building prevents both from being our reality. Next slide, please. Most of Pierce School present significant challenges in terms of security. There are no walls or doors to lock in Unit A, the SEC, and Unit C. In addition to the lack of classroom doors, the SEC is on a busy public corner, sorry, my cat is trying to open the door to get into the room where she is shut out of. In addition to the lack of classroom doors, the SEC is on a busy public corner distant from the main office. In the event of a significant security event, our campus is impossible to fully secure as presently designed. While the police have been fantastic partners in helping teachers think about their best options in the event of a serious security breach, the Pierce community is uniquely disadvantaged in this regard, which is concerning for parents, students, and staff. In addition, our middle school students must transition outside on public streets and without adults up to seven times each day, navigating long stretches of sidewalks and staircases. Next slide. I think this is where Matt steps in.
Good evening, everybody. As you can see, just from some of the pictures here, the way the building was built in 1970, it does not meet the current codes, and the way things have evolved, we've got wires hanging in all different types of places. We wouldn't be in compliance today to meet the current building standards, and we have a lot of workarounds to try to make it a functional building. Next slide. You can see, you know, with the building being about 50 years old, it's really reached its maximum useful life. You know, we have to do something rather significant throughout quite a bit of it, and so that's one of the reasons we kind of got to the point where we were going to decide to renovate and replace. And at that point, I will turn it over to the next person, I believe.
Thanks, man. Lynn, I think this is you?
Yes. So the MSBA process is an eight-module process, and we're currently in Module Four, nearing the end of it, which is schematic design. We've been working on this process since the middle of 2019. Next slide. In the preliminary design program, we had to identify various options to analyze, and one of those was upgrade-only as a basis, which we knew it didn't meet the educational program needs, but it does serve as a basis for the other options that we looked at. We looked at renovation-only options, which, again, didn't meet the program requirements. Next slide. But we also looked at two addition renovation options, one demoing about a third of the building, and the other demoing about two-thirds of the building. Both of these, while they improved upon the educational program provisions, it didn't meet the full educational needs. Next slide. We also looked at new build, new construction concepts on the existing site and one on the park across the street. Next slide. We paid a lot of attention to the one on the, the new construction on the existing park, because at first glance, it did look like it was the easiest option, but because of the footprint of the park, the building was going to have to go vertical because of the square footage needed and dwarfed all the residential buildings nearby. It also didn't have clear access points, and the fact that an Article 97 process swapped the parkland out would have been required, and the fact that the town park had just recently been renovated were all factors in deciding that this location was not the right location. Next. From the preliminary design program, we moved into the preferred schematic report, and we moved forward to renovation projects, two options, and two new construction options, focusing the new construction on the existing site, one connecting to the historic building and one independent of the historic building. Next. We took those four options and analyzed them further by going through a decision-making matrix. We looked at each of the options based on pedagogy and educational program. Next. We looked at it based on town and neighborhood impacts. Next slide. And architectural impacts. In the culmination of this in-depth evaluation of the, of the criteria, it came up with Option 3BH as the preferred option, and this is the new construction option connecting to the historic building. We then also looked at all of these options based on cost, realizing that the code upgrade, which would be a 100% on the town with no MSBA reimbursement, was still quite significant in cost, and when we looked at the rest of the options, they were all fairly close in cost, so it didn't, it wasn't a deterrent from choosing Option 3BH as the preferred option with its price tag up 220 million at the time of preferred schematic report. So the process, as I had said, has been ongoing for the past 22 months. We're nearing the end of the schematic design submission. We're looking, we're targeting to submit our schematic design to MSBA on October 27th in anticipation of a MSB Board of Directors approval vote on December 21st, and we are looking for a town vote immediately thereafter, as soon as possible. This brings us to our overall construction package, where our schedule, where we were looking to start early construction midway about, at the culmination of design development, where we would start the demolition process for the existing school. This will allow us to get a head start on the main construction while the design is being complete, and the main construction, school construction is targeted to be complete by the end of 2026, with a potential move-in date of, during February break of 2027. Turn it over to Margaret.
Just quickly, orient you to the, this is the site plan, where School Street is the street to your, on your left, and Harvard Street on the right. North is up page, and the historic building is down page in the middle. So this is the, the site plan was, shows the main drop-off and main entry approach would be on the lower right at the existing drop-off circle, with entries on School Street as well, and Harvard Street on the upper right, and tying with a third-floor bridge to the second floor of the historic building. And this plan also shows the, incorporates the bike lanes that have been recommended by the, approved by the Transportation Board, as their direction to put bike lanes along School Street. Next. So just go, start at the bottom of the building. On the lower left here, we're showing multipurpose room band and stage down at the level of School Street and Harvard Street to activate that corner, parking, equivalent parking to what's there below the building now, under the new building. Next. On the, then up, so not quite a full level up, is the, all the main public spaces that are available to be used by the community and all easily locked off from the rest of the school. You have the gymnasiums on the upper left, and the cafeteria here in the middle. Next. On the second floor is where it starts the classrooms, with the grades one and two on the, on the lower left, kindergarten on the right, and the pre-K in the historic buildings, and both of those surround the, a play area in the, a lower-grade play area in the location that it currently exists, but upgraded. Next. And then above that, you'll have, on the lower left is grades three to five, and on the right is the middle school for seven, eight, and we're circling now, and sixth grade on the upper right, and they're all connected, that half of the school being identified for the middle school and separate from the rest. Go ahead.
Thanks, Margaret. This is Will Spears. I'm very happy to be speaking to you this evening. I have the envious task of showing you the pretty pictures, so I'm pretty happy about that. So obviously, goal one is to design a school that is based on the school's ed plan, but another major challenge of this project has been fitting it into its urban context. We felt very strongly that it needed to blend with the open spaces, both at the park and towards the interior of the site. So we created certain moves. We pulled the building away from the library a little bit. Here you see a green space, which is going to connect School Street up towards the historic building and the drop-off loop. Moving down School Street, this gives you a general view. The idea was to use brick, which is the cheapest, most durable exterior material you can, you can use predominantly, but we also had to break down the scale of the building. It is a big building. We're very fortunate, we were able to fit the building on three floors, not have to go to four, and this is what you see here. And in addition to the breaking down, the modulating the texture of the facade, we also use different materials, and these materials also draw from the neighborhoods that are surrounding the building, so the slate, which you see on historic building and on local houses, is used, as well as metal panel, which I guess is a more modern building, but you see it a lot on buildings that are going up around Brookline, especially when you want to step back portions of the building and break down the scale of the whole construct. So this is a view of the new plaza that we've created on School Street. This is really the second entrance to the- This is really the second entrance to the school. And what you're looking at is the cafeteria on the lowest level, and then the library or media commons on the two floors above, in the center of the building, the crux of the building. This view is from the corner of School Street and Harvard Street, and it shows some of the manipulation we did to break down the massing of the building by pushing it back in places and just creating a play of solid and void, and forward and back. Along Harvard Street, we had the ability to use the two gymnasiums to break up the form a little bit more and provide a little bit of visual interest. There's also an entrance off Harvard Street, which you see here towards the right side of this image, which leads directly to the multipurpose, multipurpose space and bandroom. And also an access for the gymnasium, so it can serve as a public entrance off hours. Moving around to the main entrance of the building, this is, you're looking at the historic building on the left, the triangular brick building on the right, that's the neighbor. And then we're creating a presence, again, a play on solid and void, where this is the main entrance of the building. It's only two levels here, because it's a sloping site. A little bit closer view, you get a sense for the fact that it's universally accessible. And as you enter the building, you'll be looking at the monumental stair on the left, and then looking through into the media commons directly ahead. Then this is looking a little bit more to the right, to the courtyard created between our building and the neighboring building. We go down to the bottom of that same courtyard, looking up, you can see that we've integrated the outdoor amphitheater into the space, along with planting boxes. And those two rooms there that you see just to the right are the two art rooms. That's the quick tour of the outside of the building. Thanks, Will.
I can pick it up here to start talking about the cost of this. So, we, back in June, the schematic design documents come out, the end of, the end of May, actually, and by the middle of June, we had them estimated. We had three estimators looking at the plans. If you look at the second yellow row there, you'll see, if you can read it, that there were three totals that came in for the estimate. It's $184 million, $190 million, and $188 million. Consigly, who was selected as our construction manager, was at $188, right in the middle of the two. So that's the estimate we used for construction moving forward. As you look at that, slightly below that second yellow row, and look to the third yellow row, we added some estimate for soft costs. And at the time of mid-June, with the $188.7 million construction costs, we were at a $247.3 overall project costs. And as you can see on the right there, some of the factors for this, higher than normal costs, was the site logistics, right? We're building this, building over an existing parking garage, to fit into a tight campus in urban setting. There's hazardous materials in the building. And as you all might know, there's a lot of volatility and price escalation in the market right now. So it all conspired against us to drive that cost to $247 million. We understood that that was too high, given, you know, the potential available funds. So we took on a value engineering exercise. We just didn't decide to, you know, cut the building, cut the cost willy-nilly. We only took items that met these four criteria, and that was basically no, the value engineering, the cost reduction could have no impact to the educational plan for the school. It could not compromise the fossil-free status and sustainability of the school. And it could have no impact to the performance and durability of the school. So we made sure, as we looked to, again, reduce the cost, that none of these key factors to the building were compromised. Next slide, please. So, this is a list of the value engineering items. It totals $24 million. They're subtotaled now by category. So I won't take the group through this, but I can tell you that they were approved first by the school, we had a subcommittee of the school building committee, a value engineering committee. They made recommendations to the school building committee, and then the school building committee actually voted and approved all these items in. And as I mentioned, you know, on the previous slide, we didn't compromise the key, you know, tenets of the school. Next slide, please. So, to remind you where we were when we estimated the building, we were at $247 million, which is the number at the top. You just saw the list of $24 million of value engineering that we took on. In doing so, we actually re-looked at, you know, some of the items in that $24 million, and decided that a couple of them, in fact, might impact, I think in this case, you know, maybe both performance of the school and some of the sustainability. So we added back in, actually added back in $782,000. We took out the feasibility study budget, because those funds have already been procured. We had $6.2 more million of soft cost reductions. And finally, we were able to, I think, in coming up with a new plan, we were able to take relocation costs down from $10 million to $8.5 million, excuse me, from $10 million to $1.5 million, a savings of $8.5 million. And we ended up taking geothermal out of the project, making an ad-alternate, so that if the project came in, we're actually going to do dual designs, design the building with and without the geothermal. So if at bid time, we get lucky, we have significant savings, we can put the geothermal back in the building at that point. So, all those cost reductions took us from $247 million down to $199.7 million, and that's the number we'll be asking the committee to approve tonight. Next slide, Andy. So this is a breakdown of that $199 million we just looked at in the previous page. It's $7.5 million of administrative costs. A lot of that is the OPM cost, but there's other, you know, legal and other costs within there. There's the architect and engineering cost of $18.2 million, recon costs for the construction manager participating in this process of $300,000. The construction budget, which you saw the estimates for, is $157.7 million. Missed delays project costs of three, which includes the relocation costs and some town project management costs. FFNE, which is the furniture fixtures and equipment, of $1,850,000. The technology and IT, for $1,005,000, brought us to $190 million. If we go to the top of the next page and add contingencies in to make sure we can accommodate change orders, you know, in the next part of the process, once we start construction, as well as any market conditions that might impact us between where we are now, schematic design, and then the actual bidding time, brings us to a total of $199.6 million. And based on our calculations and our forecast, the MSBA funding will be about $44.8 million, which means the impact to the town of this project will be $154.8 million. Next slide, please. So, we did this analysis to compare, you know, if we move forward with the project, which is the left-hand column built now, it's the slide you just saw, it's the $199.6 million less the MSBA funding of $44.6, and it's $154.8 million. That's the, again, I repeat myself, that's the number, that's the numbers we're asking the, the school committee to approve tonight. If for some reason, the project had to be built later, didn't occur now, we put a timeline out there five years later, that's what the bill later represents. There would be a 4% escalation in construction per year, which we thought was actually, you know, rather modest. That would take the $157 million in five years and make it $191 million. We escalated soft costs 2% a year for five years. That would make the $41.9, $47.9 million, for a total of $239 million. And we all thought there would be a good chance that if we pulled out and did not take the MSBA's funding, there's a good chance that other needy communities would step in front of us, and there would be no, potentially no opportunity for funding in the future, given the situation here. So there'd be, none of the $44.6 million coming back. The town cost would be $239 million, and a difference of waiting five years to this building could potentially cost the town another $85 million with no added benefit. Next slide, please. So the timeline, as Helen started to let us know at the beginning, tonight, we have a school committee presentation and vote. I think this date might be changing, but it might be going from the 20th to the 28th. But sometime in the near future, we're going to be meeting with the select board. There were some emails going along today that might be changing that date. But looking for the select board to make a presentation there and ask for a vote. The vote there would be three things. Voting on the budget, voting to submit the schematic design package to the MSBA, and then placing the project on a future ballot. On 10/13, we need to let the MSBA know what the cost of the project is, and the fact, and in fact, that Brookline would like to move forward with the project. So that's the deadline to submit the budget information to the MSBA. On 10/27, two weeks later, we actually have to submit the design, schematic design package to the MSBA. It's a huge package. It's probably at least two, you know, large notebooks full of information that documents how we got to where we are today. Based on that, two months later, in 12/21, the MSBA would meet with their board of directors to hopefully approve our schematic design package. If that was the case, we would then have 120 days or four months, and I think that puts us at 4/19, April 19th, to secure a vote and sign the project funding agreement. So we're hoping that, to beat that date, that sometime directly after the board of directors meeting in January, February, we have January here in a bout of optimism to have our debt exclusion vote. So with that, I'd like to go to the next slide. And maybe, Jamie, we're, back to you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. So I guess, I just wanted to give the longer context of the Pierce renovation conversation. So when I started teaching in Brookline, the principal, then Piper Smith Mumford, told me that Pierce was next in line for renovation to address our community needs. That was in response to a specific question that I asked about the fact that I was teaching in a classroom that was not accessible for students with disabilities or on crutches. That was in 2005, 17 years ago. Since then, Runkel, FRR, DHS, and Driscoll have all been renovated or rebuilt. Meanwhile, Pierce has been asked to use the public library and the Brookline Teen Center for music classes. The town has rented space in the third floor of an adjacent building for middle school students, has moved school department offices to create improvised classrooms in the SEC, and has literally carved classrooms in half to create more space. Teachers and students have long made do with substandard conditions in the belief that Pierce would someday soon be renovated. And as other schools have been redesigned to maximize time on learning and ensure that students are safe, Pierce continues to make do with a design that was long ago proven ineffective for learning. Brookline students, teachers, and families deserve a building that serves the educational needs of the community. We're incredibly grateful for the support of two Pierce parents, Andy Liu, member of the Pierce School Building Project Committee, and Mariah Obrega, school committee member, for their efforts on behalf of our students. Similarly, this project has benefited greatly from the extensive experience of school committee member Helen Charlefsky and select board member Bernard Green, both of whom have been committed advocates for our community. Thank you for your support in helping to ensure that Pierce can have the facilities that our students need.
So, David, do you want to take on the questions and answers? Because I can't see people.
Yes.
And who would have their hands up?
Can we take the slides down so we can see everyone online? Since there's no content?
I can't hear you.
Just asking if we can take the slides down so we can see everybody on.
Oh, yeah. Good idea.
All right, that helps.
Yes, much better.
Okay, so who would like to go first with a question? Anyone? All right, I'll go. So I have a question regarding the contingencies budget of approximately $9 million. I'm just curious if you could walk us through how you arrived at that number.
Sure, and I'll ask Lynn Stapleton to help. I'll hit it broadly, that those are prototypical numbers that are generated via an MSBA worksheet that, based on the subcontractor costs and the construction manager costs, that out of that total cost are generated both a construction contingency and an owner's contingency. And maybe, Lynn, you could talk a little further about the makeup of those two contingencies?
So, the construction contingency is 5% of the construction cost, and this is pretty standard in the industry for carrying a construction contingency. And we have carried a 1% owner's contingency. The construction contingency, for the most part, takes care of any issues or changes with construction, whereas the owner's contingency is used for any changes within the soft cost categories, such as if what we're experiencing on other projects, FFNE coming in higher than expected, those contingencies help cover situations like that.
Thank you. And then just a quick follow-up. There was a mention that if we're running under cost, that potentially the geothermal add-on could come in within that $199 number. Where would you anticipate realizing those savings potentially? In your experience, how does that usually come about?
There's a number of different bid packages that would go out, and I'm not sure where it would happen. But as we bid the project out, and we have competition amongst the bidders, the hope is that that competition would drive the price down, and we would realize savings. The hope there is, is that the, again, the volatile market that we're in right now, the, you know, very hot construction market, would start to cool off when this project went to bid. And we might be able to, if that was the case, take advantage of some savings and be able to therefore fit geothermal in.
It would likely occur after we bid the main bid package. At that point, where we pretty much know all the costs for the building, and we know where we stand in terms of the cost in relation to the budget.
Well, and at that time, we would have the GMP, correct?
Yes.
The guaranteed maximum price. We have Jody Starok here from Consigly. She's the project manager for this project from Consigly, maybe?
Project executive, yeah.
Project executive, excuse me. I think you can speak to the answer about the ad-alternates and how that, how it's been in your experience.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to make that decision as part of the ad-alternates, just because it would impact some of the trade bidders. So it has to be part of the bidding, and you have to make that decision early. But to go along with what Jim is saying, I mean, at some point, which I feel like we've been saying for a good amount of time now, right, that this market has to settle down, or at least recalibrate itself. There are starting to be signs of hope of that. You know, we've seen some trades start to flatten, like steel, while others continue to escalate further than we would have thought, you know, even two or three months ago, like glassblazing, electrical, or HVAC. But I think Jim's point is correct in that, you know, we could hit the spot, you know, when this market starts to cool down and these subcontractors are starting to look for backlog, I think this project is going to be very attractive from a backlog standpoint and a subcontractor participation standpoint, because it will have those backlog numbers for 2024, '25, and '26 mainly, which they are looking to fill those slots in their backlog. So, if those bids come under, then that's where Jim is saying, you know, we would have the room to include that within the numbers that we've already established.
All right, thank you. Mariah, I think you had your hand up.
I did, I had two questions. One is on the geothermal, going back to that, the, just the Driscoll experience of having taken it out and then adding it back because the operational expenses.
Can you speak louder, Mariah? I think it's really hard for us to hear you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. The Driscoll experience and just how adding it later, or basically that the calculation was done, and it was shown to be, to have a relatively reasonable payback period? And so I guess my question is, has the team done the payback period on switching from geothermal to the other option? geothermal to the other option? And if so, what is it? And do we then just add it back earlier because essentially it pays for itself pretty quickly? Does my question clear?
Yeah, Will or Margaret, I don't know if you have any payback information on geothermal. I know it's early in the design.
It's early in the design. We really need another round of analysis. We need to drill a test well. We need to refine the design, or only its schematic design. So that question will be foremost on our mind, understanding the payback for those, for that system as we move forward.
Okay.
I think we'd all like to get there if we can find a way to do it.
I just, I think that it's really, I mean, we're voting tonight on the dollar amount, but it is sort of a fundamental importance to the project of if it's worth it, we should be doing it financially. I mean, there's many reasons to do it, but particularly financially. My second question is, this is a timeline question. The MSBA vote is December 21st, per the chart, and I think Jim said that goes to April 19th then for the townwide vote needing to be before April 19th. And I've heard some discussion that perhaps the select board and other members of the community and staff want to have the vote in May. And I'm just, I want to understand, it's my understanding that can't, that cannot be, it has to be before April 19th. Can I just get that confirmed?
Yeah, I can start, and I'll ask Lynn to come over the top and add some color where I, where I might, might be a little loose with my facts, but as I understand it, and I don't know that we've seen it, but the, as I mentioned, the MSBA gives you 120 days from the board meeting to sign the project funding agreement, which is what establishes, you know, the costs, as we laid them out today, they'll be very similar to that at that time. And that 120 days, as was just mentioned, is April 19th. And if, if in fact the vote goes, or the desire is to vote in May, something later than, you know, the January, February that we're targeting and past, in fact, past the April 19th, we would have to go to the MSBA board for relief there. Not normally, when we ask the MSBA for relief, it's at staff level. In this case, it's such a drastic change, we'd actually have to go to the board. And I don't know that I have experience where they've granted that before, but I do know it's going to be a challenging question if brought before the board. And Lynn, I don't know if you have any other color to add to that.
I will say that we are already having to go for an extension
Right.
of the feasibility study agreement. It ends on October 15th of the next month, and we're already extending that to the December 21st board meeting. And they are already asking us now what our schedule is for the, for the town vote, and we owe that decision to them by the end of September.
So that's two weeks from now?
If, if, for some reason, we can't get it within the 120 days, at that point is when we would have to declare that to MSBA, and that will determine their, you know, they will make that determination as they are also making the determination to extend our feasibility study agreement.
So can I just get clarification on that? You need to ask the MSBA, you need to tell the MSBA when the vote is, by the end of September?
We, we have, we have asked.
Or request an extension or something.
Correct. We have to, we have requested an extension of the feasibility study agreement, and they want a formal letter from the town by September 30th, making that request formal, so that they can put together an amendment to the feasibility study agreement. But at the same time, they're asking when our, when the town vote is going to be, because they want to understand the full process to get to town approval. And at that point, if, if it's going to be later than the 120 days, we'd have to declare that in the letter, and at that point is where they would then, you know, we'd probably have to enter into a process of requesting an extension of the execution of the project funding agreement.
So just sorry, sorry, David, to beat a dead horse. Is this, is this one integrated request that all happens in September, or is it multiple requests you're making?
It would be one unless, unless I said, if you extend beyond the April date, you were declaring to them when, when the town vote is going to be. At that point, they would ask us to, they would tell us what our process would be for requesting an extension of the project funding agreement.
I see. Thank you.
Which would be at board level, correct, Lynn?
Yes. The staff could not make that decision. It'd have to go to the board.
So your letter goes to staff, and then they notify you if you need to appear in front of the board for that portion? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
So it sounds like we need to have everything in a letter and ready to go by the end of this month.
Who writes that letter? Who's writing that letter?
Right, where would that letter come from? Does it come from you?
It has to come from the board of select people.
So the select board, okay.
They have to request it.
So we're working on drafting that letter now. We'd send it to the MSBA, Lynn Wright, and then on the, on the extension of the, the first extension of the board meeting would be an amendment or something, Lynn, is that true?
Once we request the extension of the feasibility study agreement, they will, they will provide the town with an amendment to the feasibility study agreement, and the town would have to execute that amendment.
Thank you.
Nancy?
And because the invitation to feasibility study went to Bernard, we are making a recommendation that the select board authorize Bernard to sign the letter requesting an extension.
To be very, very, very clear, the letter has to come from the select board. You are.
Nancy, you have to talk more into the mic.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
To be very, very clear, the letter has to come from the select board. You are drafting the letter for the select board? Bernard is going to take the letter to the select board, get them to agree to whatever's in that, and he will sign. Is that the plan? Itch.
Yes.
Yes. Very good.
That's the plan.
And they're aware of this, correct?
And this isn't.
We were actually drafting the language as we speak.
And this isn't going to them the 20th, though. This is now.
It's going the 28th or 27th, whenever that next meeting is.
28th.
But the letter is due by the 29th to MSBA?
Correct.
Oof, why is the select board pushing it off to the 28th? Do we know?
I'll let Helen maybe take that, but I, my, my understanding was they needed more time to, to allow both themselves and the advisory committee to better understand the information in front of them. Is that a fair statement, Helen?
Yes.
Bernard here? Is he here?
We do need to get the budget agreement into the MSBA by the 13th, so they're still within that window. We always knew we had to get this letter requesting the extension in, and, and we have gotten verbal, right?
Right. We have verbally spoken to them about needing an extension, and we promise to follow up by a formal request by the end of the month.
Suzanne?
Is Bernard on this call, on this meeting?
Yes, yes. Bernard is Matt Gillis, unfortunately. He couldn't get it.
I'm trying not to embarrass Matt. Bernard, you're already making me look good. I'm going to have to try and meet in your standard.
Right.
Hi, Bernard. Suzanne. So Bernard, what, can, can you help us think this through a little bit? I mean, tonight, we are going to vote on a number. That's our recommendation for the, for the cost for the project that we are sending to the select board. Is that correct?
Correct.
If I, if I could just clarify, and maybe I'm incorrect here, but Lynn could, could again, Lynn could correct me, but I think we're, we might be voting on two things tonight, subtly, maybe, but both approving the, the budget, the schematic design budget, as well as approving, Lynn, shake me off.
I thought we were going to ask them to approve the project scope and budget of the schematic, and to submit the schematic design.
Right, exactly. That's going to be my second.
On September 29th.
Wow. That, that's the select board. I thought Jim was talking about the school committee.
Yeah.
I thought, is the school committee meeting on September 29th?
No, I think we're hoping to do it tonight, I thought.
Yes, no, if, if possible, and if the members feel comfortable, we would vote it tonight. We are, we do have a meeting on the 29th also.
Just for clarification in terms of what we have on the docket for tonight, possible vote on the Pierce project schematic design and budget, as well as a possible vote to file the building permit applications and demolition certificate applications. Also, to be clear, our votes are technically not binding on the process. It's actually the select board's vote that matters here and is binding. So this is an advisory vote. Essentially, we're saying that as the elected leaders to represent the interests of the school community, this is our recommendation on how to proceed, but it's a select board's vote that is binding.
You're absolutely correct, David, but also, the select board has indicated that they want to know that the school committee is behind this project. So it's an important vote.
Yeah, it'd be pretty awkward if the school committee wasn't behind the process.
Right. Any other questions?
Nancy?
Andy, do you have something to add to? I haven't heard from you regard, and I know you've played a big role in all of this, and I'd like to hear from you.
Well, at this point, I obviously support moving forward. I mean.
You guys have to talk a little louder, because we can't hear you.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I would obviously support moving forward. I guess just a personal remark, I mean, as a member of the building committee and part of the value engineering process, I've been, I've seen up close the dedication of our project team and our principal, Jamie. And, you know, we've had lots and lots of competing demands on this project and some unexpected delays, but I think the net effect of that has been to make it a stronger, better justified, and I hope more broadly supported, project. So, yeah, thanks to the, the project team and to Jamie for your work on this. Long may it continue.
Thanks. Thank you, Andy.
All right, are there any, Suzanne, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'm going back a little bit to the burden on Bernard. I mean, I, we're going to vote for this, and I assume we're, we're going to do it with enthusiasm and moving us forward. However, Bernard, that's a big burden on you to convince the select board, and so I'm wondering what, what you might suggest we might do besides a vote? Is there something else we should be doing, or do you, do you think you have all the support and help you need to get this over the line with the select board?
Okay, from my understanding, in terms of the select board's vote on the scope and the budget, what we really need is indication that the school committee is behind this enthusiastically. And at that point, we just need to convince, I believe it's three select board members, it's not four, unless we, we actually put a date for the election up to vote. That, that vote would require four select board members. So, you know, I would have to, and, and others would have to convince four select board members to vote yes on the budget, the scope, and a, an election date. And of course, that's where the difficulty arises, because there is some pushback from the town clerk on that, and we just need to, to address that issue. I think that what we've discussed tonight is that, or what we've seen tonight, is that the likelihood of us being able to do an election in May is not very good. So we just have to make that, that case.
Thank you. Could you also list the date for us, the reasoning for why there's going to be a delay in terms of taking this up on the select board? Is there any further work that needs to be done prior to this coming up?
You mean September 27th instead of September 20th?
Yes.
I was informed of that this afternoon in the middle of another meeting. My understanding is that there was a feeling that we had built in a lot of extra time in this process, and it's better to give the select boards some additional time to address some questions that have come up among select board members, at least one select board member, as well as address the issue of the timing of the election. And, you know, an extra week was, you know, was not needed, but preferred to be able to do that.
If I could add to that, I think there were some members of the advisory committee and the select board who were interested in digging a bit deeper into the value engineering, trying to make direct comparisons between the, the budget pre VE and the budget post VE, and they want to understand that more deeply before going to a vote.
But, but the presentation for that vote is not going to come until the 27th?
Right, but some of the, some of the documentation, I think, will be distributed before then. In fact, some of it was distributed to us today.
Okay.
Right, and it was also distributed to the select board, I think by Bernard, that same spreadsheet that, that you're talking about.
Yeah, well, what I, what I distributed was the, the slide deck that you saw today, as well as a summary memo to sort of focus the select board members on issue of cost, which is what, you know, people are really concerned about.
And I think one thing we haven't talked about today is the issue in terms of the, when the election is. Every month is more or less a $700,000 hit to the project. We did a lot of work to get the, and Andy can attest to this too, when we were working on getting the number down, to get it to 199. And to me, it would be a $3 million hit to the project. So on the one hand, people certainly want to keep the amount down, but by waiting, it goes up.
All right, Suzanne's had her hand up, and then I'll go to Mariah. Go ahead, Suzanne.
So I'm just going to you, Andy, on this. So if they want to spend more time, AC and select board, looking at the numbers, but we, as a committee, have already voted, you know, recommended our, our approval of this recommended budget, then what would happen? I mean, if they, if they were to come back and say, you know, I can find another $5 million here or $500,000 there, to what purpose is that? I mean.
I think, as David said, it's the select board's vote that's binding, not our vote.
So they could do that without our approval? I mean, because we're only recommending, I guess, is that it?
I suppose so.
By the way, if I understand, if I understand you, Suzanne, it's not that they're looking for additional savings, it's that they just want to understand better than they do now the process by which we brought it down from 247 to 199.
Yes, I can say that I haven't heard people calling for additional cuts beyond what we've already approved. It is, as Bernard says, that, you know, the, the documentation is not that easy to understand, and people just want to reconcile it in their minds, and they need another week to do that.
And does that clarify?
To reemphasize what Helen said about the timing, if in fact, you know, it goes out another four or five months, you know, Helen mentioned the number 3 million, and if we'd have to take that back out again, you know, I mentioned that there were some, you know, basic items that weren't compromised on when we made the initial cuts, and that was educational program, sustainability, and performance and durability of the school. If we had taken that 3 million out, we would definitely, we would definitely have to start compromising against those items for which we had not bent to this point. So we might have to make, you know, cuts to the program or what have you. So that's the only other caution I have with extending the escalation impact to, to the current budget.
Can I clarify that? Make sure I understand that, Jim?
Yeah.
So the effect of delaying the vote and undergoing that, that extra escalation, it's not that we would add that money to the budget and vote, and have the town vote a higher number.
No, because we already voted the number.
We're stuck, we're stuck with the current budget. However, we have to do, we're able to do less with, with the money that we've, that we've committed.
Exactly, and my point was that less could mean impacting, you know, educational program.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Mariah.
I just want to follow up on this. So when you were presenting, you said a January vote led to a timeline of, if I recall correctly, a February 2027 entry, correct? Did I? Is that right? And then, so if we were to vote in May, are you saying that the date, the February 27 would slip? And if so, how far would it slip the same, the sort of an equivalent form of months to the end of that year? Or what would the slippage be there?
It wouldn't be to the end of that year.
End of the school year, not, not the calendar year, the school.
Yeah, it would be to, yeah, construction would finish in June of '27, so the school would be ready for a fall of '27.
So it would slip to the end of the year, the end of the school year?
Yeah.
Okay. So it, and so it really is like a very direct correlation between vote date and open date? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other? Any other questions? Jennifer.
I mean, I'm just, I'm concerned that, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we would need to even go before the board and ask to, I'm uncomfortable with a May vote. I think it's too late. I think it's too late for escalation costs. I think we're already cutting the budget very slim, in my opinion. I really wish that geothermal was in, I wish a lot of things. We all probably wish a lot of things. But I think that the budget has really been trimmed. I think with escal, the potential for escalation costs makes me nervous about cutting into our educational program. So I'm not really excited about having to go before the board and ask for a potential waiver or extension, whatever it's called.
When you say board, you don't mean select board, you mean MSBA?
No, I mean the MSBA board. Like, I'm not hearing from the people who do this as their profession, because that's not what I do, but I'm not hearing a resounding like, oh, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
I'm hearing a like, not, something we've seen before, commonly. So I don't think we should do that. I think, I think that we should try to get it on, like, I'm for the January vote. That's where I'm at. So I'm also a little bit nervous about the select board. I think I need to just clarify, because I'm, I feel like we're sort of dancing around one little piece, which is the select board, if they're going to prep a letter, and Bernard's going to bring that, and it goes to the select board on, I think it was the 28th, and we need to have it in on the 29th. I like, I hope someone's planning on like, I don't know if this can be an electronic submission, or like, is literally driving it to MSBA to be logged in the records.
Yeah.
I mean, like, seriously, because they don't care if we miss a deadline, it's on us. And $44 million is no small amount. This was the whole reason we waited on this project, was for MSBA funding. I'm a little bit concerned about waiting so close to the deadline for that letter. That scares me, like, we can't miss that deadline. And we're, the piece I think we're skipping around is that, I think I'm hearing these folks say that we need to include in that letter when we plan to put a vote on the calendar for the debt exclusion, which I'm sort of hearing is a problem. So I think we need to talk about this, problems.
I share your concerns, Jennifer, and it does worry me that the, we don't have control of the select board. I respect our colleagues on the select board, but that is a very tight turnaround time. So I hope there may be some reconsideration about when the select board takes this up. Also, it's pretty critical that we know when this will go on the ballot. If September 30th, if there's an expectation that by September 30th, MSBA will know when this is on the ballot, that is something that would require four votes on the select board. And I'm not sure that they're there at this point, so that's somewhat concerning. I see Bernard as his hand raised, so I'll go back to you.
I think Lynn may have a clarification first.
Okay, now go ahead, Lynn.
That's okay, Bernard?
I guess I could make the recommendation that you ask the board on September 20th to have Bernard send in a request for the feasibility study agreement. I can then ask the MSBA if we can provide them separately with the election date by the end of September. And it could be a separate letter.
I still think that--
Either way, though, if it's one letter or two, we still would need that information by the end of the month. That's very tight. Nancy?
So if I understand this correctly, and Andy, help me out here, the select board, where they're unclear is around where the value engineering came in, right? And I think that they would like as much information as possible to dig as deep as they would like to within that value engineering. And my recommendation is, whatever they would need, let's give it to them. Like, you know, I don't--
They have, they have all of that information as of this evening. Anything they want sorted by category, by item, by cost, summarized in total, any and all information that they need, I now have. I will say that, you know, I will make that strong statement.
Can I ask--
Nancy, the select board wants to hear from the advisory committee, and the advisory committee also has this information but will not meet until late next week, and that is why I think the select board wants to wait until AC has had a chance to weigh in.
Do they appreciate that there's $44 million plus $700,000 a month hanging in the balance here?
They do.
All right. Matt, and, go ahead, Matt.
Yes, thank you. If the school committee is comfortable with all the information that they've heard and supports the team and the trust that everybody's put into it, I suggest you vote and put the ball right in the Board of Select Board's court, just the way you're supposed to.
Bernard, you wanted to say something.
So the letter we're talking about is the letter asking for an extension of the feasibility study agreement. And that shouldn't be controversial. So I think I can get Heather to put that on the agenda for the 20th. And then the other items, you know, would go on the 27th, which does create some tightness, but at least gets that, the extension of the FSA out of the way.
And I may be able to get an extension on that. I think really and truly, as long as we tell them what our plan is with our schematic design submission at the end of October, we may be able to get an extension on the actual date of the vote.
That sort of assumes that we can assure them that we're going to have the debt exclusion within the 120-day period after the December 21st meeting.
Mariah?
I think whatever the date ends up being, then MSBA will tell us what the consequences are, if it happens to be beyond the 120 days.
Yeah, I just want to say what Jen said quietly, like, into the mic really loudly, which is, I don't, I, it seems like the negative consequences are really significant, not just of the $44 million, but of the $700,000 a month, which, you know, they might say, sure, and you can continue to push the rest forward, but there is a direct cost to it, not to mention student time in the new building. That's losing that whole second half of the year, more than a half a year.
So David, if I could--
Yes.
I think I would like to ask for two votes. One is the vote that we have here, and the other is sort of the consensus vote to write a letter accompanying this vote and expressing our concern and desire for when the debt exclusion should happen in January, and that how critical it is to the project, to the cost, to keeping within our budget, all those things that we've been talking about, getting kids back into school. So that would be my suggestion.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and do that?
Wait, hold on.
Okay, why don't I make the motion first?
I feel like Jim has something to say.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good.
I had a question. So who would that letter go to, to the select board?
Yeah.
Okay, so we--
Into the, I think, to both the select board and the town clerk.
Okay, good.
Because they're both responsible for it. But let's start with the first part, if that's okay with you, David?
Go ahead, Helen.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I'd gladly like to make the motion to approve the Pierce Project schematic design and budget as it has been presented to us today.
And I'm going to give Andy the opportunity to second that, is also working a lot on this. Would you like to second it?
Yes, it would be an honor, I would second that.
All right, Andy seconds. Nancy, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes, and I want to say thank you to Andy and Helen and to the entire project team for how long, how much they've worked on this and this amazing cost alignment that was really critical to making this happen. And I just want to say, as the former PTO treasurer, I'm going to wax a little bit on this, David, I'm sorry, but like, and working so hard with Leslie when Leslie was Pierce principal on teachers needing things in the building, and the building, you know, having challenges, and having been a parent at Pierce for 12 years, this is my first year not as a Pierce parent, it's really, it's long overdue, and I'm so happy to be able to vote yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so let's get this done.
I think I have to amend, I just got a little text from somebody, that I have to amend the vote to submit it to MSBA on October 27th.
Why October 27th?
I'm not sure, is that Lynn, is that from you?
It sounded like, it was a 1013 for the budget and 1027 for schematic design in Lynn's timeline.
1013, we have to provide a project notification of what the budget will be, but the full schematic design submission is submitted to MSBA on October 27th. So we're also asking that not only do you approve the project scope and budget, but that you approve submitting schematic design submission to MSBA on October 27th.
Okay, so why don't we make that as a second vote?
All right, so Helen, you move that?
Yes.
And it's our second.
A second.
Andy seconds. Nancy, your vote?
I vote yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, now Helen, you wanted to move a second, another vote?
Yeah, I would like to request of the chair, and with my help certainly, and anybody else, and with Andy's help, to craft a letter to the Board of Select People that requests, craft a letter indicating our strong need for, need, preference, not preference--
Need, need.
--need to have, to have the debt exclusion vote in January or February at the latest.
Second. Nancy, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Can we include the clerk on that?
Yes, the town clerk.
Yes, let's include--
And the clerk, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Nancy?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so ordered.
Thank you.
Turn the house?
Turn the house.
Did you want to be a judge?
Yes, we haven't finished. The last--
We have another vote coming up, I believe. Go ahead, Helen.
The last piece is the, what you see on your agenda here, the presentation of possible vote to file a building permit applications and demolition certificate applications for 50 School Street, the 1970s building portion of, a portion of the garages to remain, and the 32 Pierce Street, the Pierce Historical Building selective, very selective demolition interior and partial west facade to accommodate new addition. Let me explain this maybe to people who may not understand. In order to work on a building that has historic value, the MSBA requires us to get approval from the Historic Commission and to tear down a building in Brookline, I'm pretty sure we need to have a demolition certificate. In order to get that, we have to apply for a building permit. It has to then be rejected by the Building Department and put over to the--
Historical.
The Preservation, the Preservation Commission, thank you, who then determines the eligibility of whether it needs--
Stay of demolition.
Help me?
Stay of demolition.
Yeah, whether it needs a stay of demolition or we can just demolish it. That determine, they determine the historical value of any of the pieces that we want to demolish. If they put a stay of demolition on it, it could take up to a year on doing that, so--
I think we've even heard 18 months.
Sometimes, I think historic buildings that are on the register are 18 months, others are not. So to the best of my knowledge. So therefore, in order to make sure that the, our project and the timing to be able to do it coincide, and that we don't get delayed in beginning construction, we need to vote this now. Does that make sense to people?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any questions?
Are you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I move it.
All right, Helen moves it, we have a second.
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Your vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, that concludes this portion of the meeting regarding--
Except I have to do one other thing. I have to, if you don't mind, I have to thank the project team, the principal, everybody who has worked incredibly hard over the last three years to get this to where we are today. It is truly Herculean effort on everybody's part.
And if I might say, we've had great leadership and guidance, so thank you.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I just have a request. Bernard, this is now the ball, this is a very, very significant ball in your court right now, and I would request the team, Jim, that you make yourselves as available as possible to the advisory committee, the select board, and whoever has any questions or needs any clarification at all, that you make yourselves available to, so that they know, whatever they need to know, that they have it, okay?
Right, well said, and we'll be there.
Okay.
Let me just say that the team has gone way out of their way to make themselves available to answer all types of questions. And I think we're really at the point now where enough select board members are really committed to this project, that it will go forward. But, you know, there's still some questions, and they will be answered, so.
Okay.
All right, Suzanne, go ahead.
Well, I just have one other thought, is there's a tremendous amount of energy and power within the Pierce community, and I'm wondering if we should somehow tap into that.
That's a good idea.
You know, they should, they should be, the select board, the advisory committee, they should be hearing from the Pierce community. I know the Pierce community wants this project. I think they're willing to put some energy and time into it. I think the time is now to make that happen, so.
The Pierce community was waiting, I believe, to hear the outcome of tonight's school committee vote, and I'm sure that they will be stepping along this process and showing some engagement as needed in the next steps.
I think six is a strong one, so, and that's--
Okay, we're not, however, we're not asking anyone to get involved in the politics of this. We just want to hear their views of--
Maybe not you, Bernard.
--for this committee either, so.
Oh, look at those kids.
All right, thank you very much to Left Field for your presentation. It was very informative. It helped frame the issues and the timeline for us very clearly. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you wanted to. I don't expect you would, but thank you for being here. And thank you, Bernard, for your diligent efforts in this area, and I know that you have a Herculean task ahead.
Yeah, well, that's our job.
Thank you, thank you.
To get the big bucks for.
Yeah.
So next, next up, we have Helen again for discussion and possible vote on the CIP request. Go ahead, Helen.
Okay, I think I, you guys are gonna get tired of listening to me tonight. So in your packet, I think you had the information, hold on, let me look and make sure I'm talking correctly, about the--
What was she in the packet?
We didn't, huh?
Oh, that, sorry, sorry, sorry. I was looking.
All right, I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, nothing, nothing.
We did get it in the folder, Helen.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yes, we did.
And actually, there were six of us at the CIP meeting. However, I will briefly talk about our meeting and our discussions Matt Gillis put together, maybe, actually, maybe I'll ask you, Matt, to put up on the screen our discussion of the CIP that you put together in the--
Happy to.
In the spreadsheet.
Sure, be ready to share my screen in one second.
We're looking at our request for next year for the town CIP.
Want me to walk them through it, Helen?
Yes, why don't you do that? That would be great. I think I've talked enough tonight.
I, I'm happy to help, so--
Thank you.
Each year, we put together a capital improvement plan, and it lists all the capital projects at the school request. We do some things in conjunction with both the Parks Department, with DPW, and with the Town Building Department. Each year, we put together a capital improvement plan, and it lists all the capital projects at the school requests. We do some things in conjunction with both the Parks Department, with DPW, and with the Town Building Department. Alexandra Vecchio is going to join us in a little bit, but I'll walk us through what those items are, and...
She's actually here.
She is here.
Yeah.
I'm going to walk us through how, what the items are briefly, and how the spreadsheet works, and then Alexandra can talk a little bit about the Parks part of it, and then we can open it up for questions. So the first thing on the list, priority-wise, is our school classroom capacity, which would be leases. And if folks have the file, they can go right to the leases tab and see the different leases, Temple Ameth, Temple Hobe, Ashlam, and Clark Road, right? That total is $2,026,000, and some of that is for moving out of the Clark Road lease and moving into Newberry. And then FY25, the number goes down a little bit, and would go down even more if we do move out of Clark Road, and then it decreases in the subsequent years. But we're mostly focused on FY24. That's our first priority because we have signed lease agreements with these places, and we lease space because our BEP classrooms and some of our offices do not fit in the schools. The next thing would be the Baldwin rehabilitation reuse study. When the Winterpouse moved into 22 Tappan, Baldwin became largely vacant. We put some Brookline and Dalton Community Ed offices over there. We need to study that building from the early 1900s. There is a inventory here, and is, that gives the year of the program, gives the summary of the building. So we got the school building, the program, square footage, last renovation, and Baldwin was last renovated in 1950. It was originally built in 1906. A lot of it's still the original structure. As Charlie would say, the building's a bit tired and needs some work. So we need to study it, and what can we do potentially in the subsequent year for renovating in place? The $9 million, some may recall from last year, was for tearing down the building and building an entirely new structure. So we're going to see if we can study it and see if we can renovate in place. Bailing furniture replacement, $200,000. To replace cafeteria tables is about $125,075 is for other failing furniture in the rest of the system, those cafeteria tables at 115 Greeno that were not part of the building project. The deferred maintenance list has been an ongoing topic for how we get there. It would be the next priority, and it's a different amount each year based on conversations with the Capital Subcommittee and based on what it costs. Last but not, or next, would be the school's long-term capital plan.
Can I just add one thing on the school deferred maintenance? It's the cost and the ability of the Building Department to do the work or get the work done on those things.
It is absolutely a capacity for both.
Most of the work needs to be done in the summer in three months, and so you need to be able to supervise and do that work during that time.
Right. Plan it out, contract it, you know, it's a collaborative effort with both the schools and the Building Department, because we often try to make things ready for them to come in and get out in a timely manner. Discussion, don't think we need to have a separate, separate line for Newberry, for school reuse, but, you know, we put that in there as a possibility, and then...
Actually, talked about maybe even taking that out, because there is a committee from the town that's looking at that, and they will be putting forward money into that committee to do a feasibility study.
And then we had the Parks, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Alexandra to share with us a little bit of the rationale behind these.
Great, thank you, Matt. Good evening, everyone. My name's Alexandra Vecchio. I'm the Director of Parks and Open Space within the Department of Public Works. So just like Matt's doing here, we also have a CIP plan that we prepare each year, and in that we have currently four school ground projects that are included in that. So that includes Lincoln School Playground, Heath Playground, Lawrence, and Baker. And so how we determine the schools that are included in that is basically how we look at all of our park improvement projects and capital projects, in that we have a third party that comes in, and every other year is looking at our parks and playgrounds and doing a safety assessment to determine if the equipment is in good condition, if it's safe, if it's compliant with all the necessary certified playground safety standards, and to make note of anything that is either, you know, in need of some replacements or is approaching its end of life. So that's one way that we do this. The other way is that we also have two certified playground safety inspectors on our staff. One is our landscape architect, Jesse Waisner, and another is our operations manager, Mike Bartlett. And so they're also doing spot checks on these playgrounds and school grounds. And we do a pretty deep dive of this for the school grounds over the summer, and we are trying to always extend the life of the structures as much as we can. I will say that 20 years is kind of what we'd say is an average life expectancy for a school playground. However, Brookline gives a lot of love and attention to its school playgrounds in that they don't just function for the school. So outside of those school hours, they become neighborhood parks and playgrounds. They are certainly used by after-school programs, summer camp programs, recreation programs. Open space is at a premium in this town, as I'm sure you all know, and so they get highly utilized. So honestly, several of these are looking at, by the time they move forward in the CIP, they would be over 20 years. And so what we use, do is try to extend their life as much as we possibly can to help them get to, to the point when we can replace them. And then, of course, when the opportunity presents itself, we certainly try to align a replacement of the playground and field with that of a school building project itself. I'll pause there. Matt, is there more that you'd like me to say on that, or?
No, that's, that's exactly why we have conversations and try and partner up with this just a little bit. So we're thinking about potentially studying a renovation replacement for the Baker School out in the year, potentially when, when there might have been a playground renovation. And they're both six years out. So this puts both things on the radar, this exercise of going through the CIP, so that maybe the Parks Department doesn't spend too much time on it if we're actually going to renovate the school. Because I think, just thinking back on the Driscoll, you know, there's basically three options. We could renovate the existing Baker in place. We could tear it down and build new on the site, which would mean we'd probably use some park space and then create some new park space after we tore down the old Baker, just like we're doing with Driscoll now, or some combination of those two types of things. So it's good that nobody is making large capital moves without consulting one another. Helen?
No, absolutely, and I think we've done that all along, every school building that we've done, except for Pierce, which the park was done about five or six years ago. We have included in our renovations or additions, even if we don't tear down the building, we include the exterior, the playground. My question to you, is this, are these playgrounds part of the submission from the DPW Parks and Rec, or is it part of our submission?
That's a, that's a good question that we're seeking clarity on, but I have, Alexandra shared like the summary. This is the Park submission where, where that information came from. So, well, we don't need to submit it twice, but I'm just waiting to hear back from the town on, on how they want us to proceed with that. But, you know, it, it has been brought to my attention that the school committee wanted to see all of the, all of the components of the capital plan and how they're impacting the schools.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate this. This is great.
And I will say, Helen, that while I've only done one of our CIP submissions, because I've only been on staff a year and a half, last year we did include these things in the DPW Parks and Open Space Division CIP submission.
Excellent. I didn't realize that. I missed that one last year. Okay, thank you. That's fantastic.
My understanding is that this is a time-sensitive vote, which is one of the reasons why it's been docketed for today. Are members prepared to proceed on a vote? Looks like...
Does anyone have questions?
Are there any questions first? Suzanne?
Yeah, I had just a couple. I see that Baker is six years out for a feasibility study, and after listing, of course, to all the work that's been done for Pierce, and we're just now voting on it after three years, I'm just wondering if, you know, we need to just kind of make sure we keep Baker on the radar here and not wait six years out to start talking about what we're going to do with Baker, so I don't know.
Suzanne, I think we need to wait, we're hoping to obviously finish out the Pierce project, and like we did with Ridley, then, you know, do the next MSBA project closer to it than, than we did with Ridley, actually, you know, so that we would apply for eligibility in probably 2027, be rejected, apply again in 2028, something like that, you know what I mean? So that we would be then on the MSBA timeline.
Okay.
They do, the MSBA does only allow you to have one project in the pipeline at a time.
And so we don't want to get ahead of them. That's, that's the only thing I think we need to be careful of.
Well, I just want to, it may be that we'll have to do some temporary things, just to keep an eye on the enrollment out Baker. We, you know, we just don't know. We're already in modules that we have for classrooms, so we're already full at Baker. So just, I think we need to, we owe it to Baker community to keep them front and center as we're going forward, and at least...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right, to Suzanne's point, just because we may have to wait a few years in terms of looking at a renovation replacement, doesn't mean we can't be looking at the Baker community for ways that we can improve the school experience for our students and staff there in less macro-level ways. There's always things that we can do to improve conditions.
Yes, absolutely.
Jennifer?
Yeah, and I don't, I know we're ready, we're getting ready for vote. I'm ready to vote, but could you just highlight for me where we might have things in the CIP like cooling our buildings? Whether we call it air conditioning or air chilling or whatever.
So that would probably be part of the school's HVAC equipment that Charlie puts together. He's takes, he takes, you know, input and feedback from us. But we have, as we've been progressing through construction, we've moved to a displaced air. Engineers don't like it, but I call it air conditioning light, where the air is chilled and dehumidified, and it's not as powerful as full air conditioning, but when it's working properly, people are very comfortable and pretty satisfied with it. And it's much cheaper than, than, you know, full air conditioning. So we've been working our way through that, and through the third floors and some of the hottest spots of most of our buildings, we have added air conditioning over time with this summer adding air conditioning to the Baker School, actually, for the third floor.
Andy?
Matt, were you not finished?
Just, Charlie, there was no number in there for this year. There was number that I could, numbers that I could see in there, so I'm, I'm confident they're working on it. I'm sure that, well, I'm not sure, but I'm confident that it wasn't a zero when there was a number there last year for FY24, but I think they took it out because they're working on it. I did, did see the numbers for the ADA, and I can't see the number for building envelope and fenstrations and other, and elevators and other capital projects that are in the town side. But Charlie is working on that stuff as well.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, can I make sure I understand what we'd be voting on right now? So I believe in capital, the idea was that we would vote now to submit immediately the items in the blue categories, and then we're waiting for information from Charlie about the items in the tan categories, and so we'll, once that comes in, we would take a vote to possibly submit some of those? Is that what we're voting right now?
Go ahead, Mariah.
First, no one talked to Charlie, right? Or was unable to talk to Charlie?
I don't think any of us have been able to communicate with him, so Mar...
Matt, were you, or Helen?
Speak, no. Email, yes.
Okay, and you didn't get any more clarification of the school projects for FY24?
Not yet.
Okay. And so I think what we were doing, Andy, was we would be voting to submit the blue ones, and we would be voting to defer any endorsement of the, of the orange tan ones until such time as we have any information, and, and a potential vote to make clear that we have not, if they are submitted, that we have not endorsed them because we have not received that information.
All right.
All right, so Helen, would you like to make a motion?
David, I have...
Yeah, I think we'll...
Just a moment, sorry. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Helen, just, just relax for a minute about this, but...
I'm relaxed.
Okay, okay, because I'm going to bring up what we have down in blue, number 20, and I thought in our conversation, in our conversation at capital, that we would throw in Newberry under, along with the Baldwin study, in case we need to look at Newberry. Right now, there's no money that we have set aside for any study or work on that as a possibility for school use. So I don't know if we need to do that. We had talked about that at capital.
We had, but there, but there is a development since then that Helen can go into more detail on, where apparently the town is already dedicating funds for broad feasibility for Newberry, including school use, so we may not need that as part of this request.
And we would not need any money in this to make that happen, because that would come from the town CIP?
No, the town would put it into their CIP.
Okay, great. Even better.
We can keep an eye on it.
Thanks.
I don't know if we've gotten the, the actual date yet when this needs to be submitted. Alexandra, do you know?
Well, technically, for me, it's Friday, but tomorrow. But also, to be fair, I have asked for an extension, and we have an extra week. I don't know if that's the same for Matt.
Matt?
Oh.
I'm still, I'm still awaiting an answer, because I didn't get an email saying when it was to buy.
I saw Melissa as I was coming in, we were, she was coming out of the elevator as I went in, and I said, Melissa, there was something really important I wanted to ask you, and I've forgotten what it is. So she got out of it because...
Oh, my God.
I know. My whole life was leading to that moment, and I messed it up, but I'm sorry.
Well, what I think we should do is vote the things we feel comfortable voting to, to put on the CIP, and then, and we can revisit this, you know, when we find out more information, or if there is something that we have to do beforehand, we'll call an emergency meeting.
All right, so Helen, do you want to formulate your motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't know how I can say we vote the blue shaded items, but...
Do you want to say, do you want to say numbered priorities, one through five?
Yeah, well, vote the numbered priorities, one through five, and make sure that the line number 25, 26, 27, 28, the school Baker and school Pierce School appear on that request also.
And if that's a friendly amendment, I could just add, and this is under the assumption that Newberry feasibility is going to be part of the town CIP request.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I make a, I'm, I'm thinking it makes a lot of sense to submit twice that one, and if we can always withdraw it.
That's true, so we could go back to what Andy had suggested at the Capital Subcommittee meeting, and include Newberry in the, in the Baldwin item, and then we just have it as backup in case for some reason the town doesn't follow through on what they represented to us.
I'll tell you what I'm fearful of. They'll fund the Newberry and they won't fund the Baldwins.
Well, we've ranked them, right?
Yeah, that doesn't mean they...
But I don't know why, I would not combine them. I would leave them as separate, which is what we'd initially had. And then it makes it much easier to withdraw one and not the other.
Okay. All right, so why don't we, we want to number them one through six? Do we really, that's fine?
Yeah. Just want to make sure because it was Andy's.
Is that fine with you, Andy?
It is, yes.
Okay. All right, so Helen has moved that we recommend one through eight as our CIP request. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy. Nancy, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
I'm just a little confused. Is, Newberry has a line or no?
It does.
Thank you, yes.
Mariah?
Yes, and I hope that we will, again, submit them, making clear the ranked, that our preferences are clearly ranked in the materials that go in.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right.
I want to make another vote, though. I mean, I don't know if it matters, but we're talking about endorsing other department submissions, and is it, does it make sense to endorse the rec submissions, or we don't need to do that? Or we shouldn't?
I don't think that's something we would typically do, endorsing.
Well, but we're talking, no, we're talking about the building department right now also, and how we're not necessarily even in, like, I think the, the point we want to make too on the building ones is we haven't heard enough information, so we're not necessarily even endorsing things that are being submitted. But Alexandra came, she shared the information, and it's like, okay, well, that's a great, it's good to know that we sort of formally reviewed them and, and are on board with them.
I'm fine with that, if you'd like to.
I would. I would like to endorse the Parks and Open Space CIP submissions on behalf of the schools that are the Lincoln Heath, I can't read, and I don't remember.
Lawrence.
Lincoln Heath, Lawrence and Baker Playground Planning that's presented to us.
All right, I'll second. Nancy, your vote?
So we're endorsing.
We're just endorsing what was presented.
I vote yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
I'm just thinking, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of a previous school committee member who would just be dying right now that we were doing this. But yes, I vote yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right.
Can I ask one more question? Where does that, do we have to do anything with building department now?
I think Charlie's going to come back with a budget at some point.
Well, is it going to get submitted on behalf of the schools without the schools having the chance to look at?
Why don't I try and have a conversation tomorrow with Melissa? Okay?
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll send out, I guess, an email to everybody of what that conversation is. Does that make sense?
It does, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we are running significantly.
Either myself or Matt, one of the two of us.
We are running significantly behind.
Well, thank you for putting us on your list.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Much appreciated. All right, so next up, we have Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. Helen, you're up again. Capital.
No, there's no cap.
All right.
But I will, just so that people know, the next capital subcommittee, I have invited Charlie to come to, he said he would, to talk about the summer work and what he did last year. So just FYI, I'm done.
Jennifer, Curriculum.
We will be having our first meeting on Tuesday, September 20th, so everyone is invited to come. Deputy Superintendent Lesi Raya Miller will be hopefully attending and presenting her curriculum, I'm sorry, Office of Teaching and Learning Department goals for the year ahead, and we'll also talk about the curriculum Subcommittee groups as well.
All right. Now, Val, who is not with us this evening, would another member of the DIJ Subcommittee like to provide an update?
I can give a brief one. Yes, so that the DIJ Subcommittee met once over the summer on August 15th. We welcomed two student representatives, and this year, and discussed what the role of students will be on the Subcommittee in the future. Janay gave an update on work that she's planning to do this school year, both within her office and in collaboration with the Office of Teaching and Learning. And everyone is excited to welcome our new Assistant Director of Educational Equity, He Young Co., whom we met earlier tonight. And finally, we spent some time looking at a draft of part of the new equity policy that we're writing. This was a section on recruitment and retention of staff from underrepresented groups. So there was some workshopping of that draft, and we're working on another draft and in the process of scheduling our next meeting.
All right, thank you for that. Mariah, Finance?
The first meeting of the year will be, it was going to be September 21st, and we've just moved it one week out, so more updates later.
All right. Suzanne, Government Relations?
Yeah, we had our first meeting today, and we talked about the Fair Share Amendment, and we will be bringing that to the full school committee next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Andy, Negotiations?
Yeah, I don't have a great deal to add to what Dr. Gilery said earlier, so our contracts with units A and B of the BEU run through 2026, but we are now in the last year of current paraprofessional contract. So our Subcommittee met yesterday to begin the negotiations for successor contract. Our team has some homework to do before sitting down with the BEU, and we look forward to an orderly process that's aligned with the budget development calendar.
All right, thank you. For Policy, we have not yet met, but we're looking to have joint meetings with Finance to finish the Fiscal D section, and then with Curriculum to go through the Curriculum section. And there will also be a Policy Subcommittee meeting relatively soon to go over the warrant. There are over 40 warrant articles, but I can merrily report that very few of them appear to be directly school-related, so it might not be as heavy a lift as most years. Are there any additional liaisons, updates?
I have one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, so this again is on behalf of Val, who couldn't be here tonight. Tomorrow, there's the topping off ceremony for the Driscoll School at 11 o'clock on the playground there. Looks like a fairly short ceremony, which involves raising the beam on the, on the new building.
And the kids sign it.
Yeah, they've already signed it.
Oh, is this the beam, is this the beam that's been sitting there at ground level for many months and that we signed? Okay, yeah, so that, that will be raised, so. We would, we would hear from the co-chair of the Building Committee, Jonathan Love, the architect, for the brief history of topping off ceremony.
When is that, Andy?
Tomorrow at 11.
Brief history of topping off ceremony, that's what the program says.
All right, any other updates, Suzanne?
Yeah, there was a BEF meeting this week, and there was a presentation from two teachers who went to Spain and learned about mindfulness. There were two school counselors from Baker, and they had a fabulous time at Barcelona. So that was, that was a great presentation. And also to let you know, they are looking for participants in the marathon representing Team Brookline, and they will actually provide training for you and bibs for you and help you with fundraising. So if you know of any runners or if anyone of us wants to run, they are looking for people. Nancy's a big chance. Anyway, get in touch with BEF. They would be happy to walk you through what that is.
All right, thank you. Any other updates? Seeing none, is there any new business? Helen, go ahead.
I'm sure all of you got the email today from a parent who is upset about what the rec department has, the problems they've run into with finding personnel and running their after-school program. And I'm not sure there's anything that we can do about it, but I'm wondering, I don't know, who's, who's liaison to our extended days?
I, I am the liaison to extended days.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and when the email first came out to parents, it was sent to me, and I reached out to Linus, Nancy O'Connor, who's the current Chair of Parks and Rec, and Ellen Lenick, who's the Pierce School Extended Day, one of the two directors, and who is the lead of the Extended Day Council, I think it's called. I can't remember the name. It's Extended Day Council. And, and I think there was a lot of sympathy and empathy for these families who had the rug pulled out from under them. And the extended days, Jean, Jean, that's the other director of PSCD. Ellen expressed the difficulty that extended days were experiencing in hiring enough staff, just like rec.
So they had the same problem.
Exactly. They were all under extreme strain to, for hiring. And, you know, we're now receiving, already had wait lists, and we're receiving additional, you know, panicked phone calls from the 40 caregiver, caregivers that were, for the 40 children in this program. I do know that at least some of the children who are at Rough and Ridley are attending day supp instead to some extent.
That doesn't start till the end of the month, yeah.
No, but it, but it does cover some things, and I know some of the kids have got other things, but it is disruptive, and, and if there's great creative solutions to help these folks, it would be, you know, I would, I would be happy to hear them and share them with the different groups.
One of the things, and I'm not sure, the, one of the problems with, like, for instance, if a paraprofessional wanted, well, they could do it. They could do it, I guess. That, you know, I'm wondering if we, they have approached the paraprofessionals in their building. I assume they probably have.
It's complicated because I think the paraprofessional day goes until later, but I think that maybe sometimes teacher principals and paras and extended days have tried to work together to creatively problem solve the schedule for everyone's benefit. With that said, rec isn't located in a school building, so it is an additional.
That's normal, yeah.
Yeah, another challenge. Anyways, certainly.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad, I actually, I'm glad I brought it up because I'm glad that you were on it already.
Unfortunately, not with any success, but yes, it's on, I think, everyone's minds.
Do you know, Linus, about paraprofessionals, if they've been approached at all? Because in Boston, we did, I use paraprofessionals for before-school and after-school programs.
No, I'm not aware, but I do know that Deputy Ryan Miller is also looking into some other opportunities. She talked about reaching out to the teen center and.
Maybe college, the college is nearby, DC, BD.
Yep, so we're exploring some options, but yeah.
I know, everyone knows, I know, I know.
Oh, good.
All right, any other new business? Seeing none, I would like to thank on behalf of the school committee, big for its big lift, pun intended, on equipping this room for hybrid school committee meetings. We know it took a lot of effort and work, and we're very much appreciative. You're doing a great service to our community.
And just as an FYI, it works now. It wasn't working for a while, but now it is working to see you guys there and to focus in on the person who's speaking.
All right, thank you. That concludes our meeting for tonight.